Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. The original comments I was going to make today, my colleague here talked me out of, and probably rightly so. So 55 years ago today, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated on the balcony of the Lorraine Hotel in Memphis, Tennessee. And Dr. King's words have often been repeated over time for good reason and to stimulate thought and conversation. Today, I choose one of his quotes that may not be very recognizable to many, but one I think we need to hear and consider, and he said, and I quote, "We may have all come on different ships, but we are in the same boat now," close quote. Instead of manufacturing and then exploiting our differences with the end result being further division, we need to celebrate those things we have in common and use those as a means to move forward. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here this afternoon and look forward to your testimony on our many items today. Without objection, I want to move up items number 11 and 12, which is our only planning department item today, as we have some liquor licenses after that we think may take some time. So, Madam Clerk?
Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for Bartlett's addition to Omaha replat seven located southwest of 30th and 11 North Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from CC District and MBD District to MBD District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 11 and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I do appreciate you pulling these two items up in front of the rest of the agenda today. This is a rezoning and final plat for a redevelopment project that you just approved a couple of weeks ago. So this is just merely catching up with the redevelopment agreement and redevelopment plan that has already been approved by this council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding these two items. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other proponents today on these items? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Just so councilmembers know, my screen is not currently working. Neither are our... On number 11 and 12? Okay, come on down. And just, I know for councilmembers, my screen is not currently working, but I think hopefully it'll start working here in a second. So if you have a question, just raise your hand.
I'm here to oppose the two roundabouts that are proposed on Farnham Street.
Yeah, so we're on items number 11 and 12 right now.
Okay.
But we'll get to that item in a little bit later.
What is that item number?
All the agendas are up front.
I guess I didn't get it.
That agenda item I think is number 48.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so are there any other proponents or opponents on items 11 and 12? Okay, seeing none, councilmembers. I don't see any lights. Is there a motion? Motion and second? Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Ancho and Agave located at 17110 Davenport Street, Suite 114.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Zach Link. I'm the managing partner with Biagis, which is a sister restaurant to Ancho and Agave. With me here is my Director of Operations. He will be overseeing directly the Ancho and Agave at the Village Point. His name is Brian Pope. We're here to answer any questions you have about the liquor license application and go further.
Great, thank you. Did I get your address for the record, too?
My personal address or the address for the business?
Either one's fine.
Personal address, 20802 Camden Avenue, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number six? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second? Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class CK liquor license for Pour Decisions located at 319 South 17th Street, Suite 506, A's Communication and Support.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Megan Russo. So I have a office space just over here on 17th Street. So basically, the liquor license will be so that I can do in-home wine tastings, classes, and public events, craft fairs, things like that. The space is basically just storage.
Okay, and that address is 319 South 17th Street?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion and second? Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a liquor license addition application for Hotel Indigo Omaha to add indoor space to their location at 1804 Dodge Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have Tracy Travis by Zoom here as a proponent. I think you're off mute now. Go ahead.
Yes, I am Tracy Travis with Hotel Indigo. We are just adding in addition for an additional bar, restaurant, and meeting area that we are adding onto our hotel.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Is there a motion?
I wanted my councilmember, Harding, to make that motion. It's in his district, not mine. Thank you.
Is that, is that a second?
No, I'm letting his cohort do the motion second.
Is there, was there a motion, was there a second? All second? Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a special designated liquor license application for The Taste of Omaha for an outdoor music festival at Elmwood Park located at 802 South 60th Street on June 2nd from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., June 3rd from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and June 4th from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Gladys Harrison. I'm representing Big Mama's Kitchen and Catering. We have been longtime supporters of Taste of Omaha. We support them continuing to get their liquor license. It's a great opportunity for the city to attend festivals that are free. It's a great opportunity for small business owners like me to be able to expose our food to the city. And Mike and his team do a wonderful, wonderful job with Taste of Omaha every year.
And Gladys, just your address for the record, too?
Huh?
Your address for the record, too, please?
Address. Oh, my address. 2112 North 30th Street, Suite 201, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so councilmembers know, I convinced Gladys to stick around for the street renaming to talk about Big Mama's Street in a little while, and maybe her son, too. All right. We have Chef Nina here as well.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nina Sodi. I'm the owner of Ocraftic and Grill. My address is 608 South 72nd Street, and I'm second in Big Mama here. Taste of Omaha have been really great for us, especially through the pandemic. Matt's been very grateful putting us out there and sustaining the business of food and culture and diversity. So having his liquor back on should be a very great thing. So, thank you.
Other proponents?
Mike Mancuso. I'm with Taste of Omaha, Inc., 501C3. Our address is 7015 Spring Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106. The organization, its mission is to promote Omaha's great restaurants as well as our ethnic diversity of our city and culture, culinary arts any way we can. And so it's a great opportunity to do this free to our community. This is our 26th year of this event. In 2018, we had a challenge because there was going to be renovation to our home where the park, where the festival was for 22 years, and that's the Heartland America Park, which then expanded also to the Lewis and Clark Landing. So that riverfront now under reconstruction caused this event to have to relocate. We looked at interim locations, working with then-City Park Director Brooke Bench, and now I see Matt Kalsovich here. But we had to look for a location that wouldn't necessarily be an issue to surrounding businesses and surrounding communities in a pretty large event. Publicly, it's one of the largest events in our city. So we took one of the largest parks that we currently have in our park system. We worked with UNO, and they've been very cooperative. We're working continuously with UNO in this project for parking that is accessible to this Elmwood Park. And so it's worked. The plan has worked. We work with Public Works, Michael Gahn. I don't know if Michael's here today at the meeting. But working with the plan that we've had no issues, no traffic, no parking problems, no incidents, and so a good record with a lot of people coming in with a very positive comments coming in of enjoying the event and enjoying the park in our, in our beautiful Elmwood Park area. Due to the delays of Gene Lakey Mall, the plan would have been that we would move back into the riverfront in 2023. But with those delays we had at Gene Lakey Mall, also causing delays with the opening of the Heartland America Park, we need one more year here at the Elmwood Park as our interim location. So we're asking for one more year here with our city liquor license approval. We've never had any liquor issues, so this is kind of ironic that we're discussing that with this particular approval. But in general, we've had a good plan and have had great reactions. We've had many different comments made by neighbors that we, we work with. I don't know if I want to read all of these. County commissioners, as well as former mayors, that have been involved with this project throughout the years in working with this and very favorable to continuing on at Elmwood Park one more year for us to return to the riverfront where we've been 22 years previous. The similarity of the previous location at Heartland America Park and Elmwood Park would be that they're both grass parks in our, our major cities, you know, with our parks. And so we've dealt with grass and dealt with issues in relations to putting on the event with our different various participants. So we've worked with neighborhood, neighbors throughout this two years that we've held the event here at Elmwood Park. And again, they haven't had any complaints, no voicing of those complaints to City Hall or to any of the leaders that we've been working with. I can understand, you know, that it's a large event, but again, with working with everybody in the city and working with the parking and the public works to make this a successful event, we've been very pleased with having no incidents and no problems. So we're looking for that one more year. In addition, this year, the two things that we're looking to do this year that we haven't done the previous two years, we're announcing that we're moving to the riverfront in 2024. We will be at Omaha's riverfront. We will be moving back to our original location. We're very excited about it. It's a $300 million project that now we can move back to with all the amenities that will help an event like the Taste of Omaha Festival be successful and where it can be for years to come. Looking for one more year at Elmwood Park. With that in mind, we're going to do a park improvement project this year after our event. We're going to address any concerns that might happen during that event for one more year. Again, we've had two years of history at the park. We've had some incidentals that we've had to make, make good on park remedy, remediation. But again, you know, it's grass and it grows back. So then the third thing is just, we would improve our plan, looking forward to working with neighbors to improve our plan, make it the best event we can that is enjoyed by the entire city as well as people outside the city that visit our city during that period of time and stay with us. We want to showcase this event in the best possible area we can and park. I think that Elmwood is a chance to do that. And then we'll move back to our Heartland America Park on the riverfront. We also have a friend here, Jim Murphy, and he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mike. And you'll be here for questions, right?
I'm here.
All right. General, the floor is yours.
Right, I'm Jim Murphy, 8504 Indian Hill Drive, 5A2. I've been a longtime friend of Mancusos, and they are good business people. They're fair, they're honest, and they run programs for families. The Taste of Omaha was something that I talked to them 28 years ago, and I patented after the Taste of Seattle and Chicago. And I've been on too many plane rides where people ask me, where's Omaha? Or this one lady, and this is a few years ago, said, I've never been to that state. I felt that to get our identity increased city, state, and nationally, this is the kind of healthy program we need. In my spare time, I commanded the Army National Guard for 30-some years as a senior commander. I've been in business in downtown Omaha since, well, our company has been here since 1808. And I'm a believer in the city and a believer in promoting a great city that has great restaurants and needs more outdoor things for families. Also thinking about COVID, outdoor events are much more satisfactory than indoor events for the spread of COVID. So with that, I hope you will be in favor of supporting a truly nice family that does good work, the Mancusos. I was a longtime friend of their father. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Good afternoon, morning, councilmen. My name is Jim McGee. I live at 5225 Jackson Street. I represent the Dundee Memorial Park Association Board. To some extent, I also speak for all the neighborhood associations that circumvent the park. I'm also the Dundee historian, so to some extent, everything I talk to you about today is factual. That may be unusual. This park is 134 years old. It cannot speak for itself. It's a green area with a playground that is donated by private money. That's a $100,000 donation.
Hey, Jim, can I have you hold for a second?
Yes.
There's a cell phone going off in the audience there. If we could, whoever's cell phone that is, please silence it or turn it off. All right. Continue. All right, continue. Thanks, Jim.
He doesn't go like that. I thought it wasn't. So anyhow, I don't want to keep. We have worked with Mr. Mancuso, or at least tried to work with Mr. Mancuso for three years. Everything we have been told has not been fact. We were promised that this would be a one-year deal. We supported the license for that one year. We love our restaurants. We support Taste of Omaha anywhere else but Elmwood Park. And we supported it the second year, even though we weren't told about it the first year. Now, six months ago, in August, that is, we were told by city official that this event would not be in Elmwood Park this year, that it would be returning to the riverfront. And all of a sudden, there's a turnabout, and we're told that, oh, no, it's going to be here. So here we are. Our only recourse to protect this old park that dates to 1889 is to oppose the liquor license. And I really don't want to do that, but we have been given no choice. And I hope you consider these facts. If, if Mr. Mancuso apparently speaks for the city when he talks about moving the event next year, I would feel differently about this if I actually heard that from a city official and not the promoter of this Taste of Omaha. Once again, our organization supports the restaurant industry. We support Taste of Omaha, but we haven't been treated fairly or transparently with this. And that's why I'm here opposing the license. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hello, City Council. My name's Rick Fulton, and I live at 410 South 82nd Street, Omaha 68114. So I oppose Taste of Omaha coming back to Elmwood Park. It's my favorite park. My wife and I take frequent walks around the park. It's 2,500 steps, the steps we take. This, the citizens have a right to our public parks, but the businesses like Taste of Omaha or other businesses do not have a right to our city parks. And I don't know why this city council doesn't favor our public parks and libraries and baseball stadiums the way they should. They, you want to monetarize them, and that's not what they're supposed to be. The, the Taste of Omaha, it closes up the park for three weeks. You, you have track mud, tracks in the mud, destroys the grass, and there's no reason why they can't go somewhere else. There's many, many other places for Taste of Omaha. And anyways, the food there, by the time you get it, it's cold, it's soggy. If you want to have a meal, go to a restaurant. And there's no guarantee that this place will, this Taste of Omaha will go downtown somewhere, Mecca Park, whatever. And for Mr. Mancuso to say they're going to have some kind of park event afterwards, well, I'd get that in writing first. And there's no, there's no legal remedy or whatever. I mean, you could come back and say, well, we're just going to do it at Elmwood one more year. So in conclusion, Elmwood Park is not a park set up for an event like this. It's not meant for, it's not meant for something like this, and they have plenty of other places to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Not sure. I'm seeing any other opponents that want to speak? All right. If not, Mr. Mancuso, we will give you a chance just to respond. I think you heard there before I closed the public hearing, and then we'll have some questions for you. Your, go ahead. Your name and address.
Oh, Mike Mancuso, Taste of Omaha, Inc. You went the address in. 7015 Spring Street, Omaha 68106.
If there's anything you know you want to respond to, you're free to do that, or else we can just go to questions.
Oh, no, I, I, you know, Jim McGee has been at several meetings that we've had on the, on the, putting together a plan to be cohesive with what the neighbors wanted to. We've been in contact with three different neighborhood associations in the area. It would be the Elmwood Exarban Park Association, the Elmwood Park Association, and then he's with the Dundee Memorial Park Association. Peter Manhart was the president back when we started this process, and Peter Manhart and I have been in contact throughout this entire process over these few years. Whether he communicated with, with Jim or not, I don't know, but we've had constant communication and, and discussing, okay? And, and then with the Elmwood Park Association, Diana Fiala, I don't know if she's there, but we've had contact as well in communications. And then Jen Bauer with the Exarban Elmwood Park Association. So we've had constant communications trying to build a, a plan that would be successful and, and again, not have any problems. The problems we want to avoid are traffic, congestion in the air, parking trash, those kinds of things that neighbors would not appreciate in the neighborhood. And so we've avoided all of those things. Sound is also a concern they had, so they wanted us to stop live music at, well, what our compromise was that we stopped live music at 10:00 p.m. The festival still can go till 11:00, but we stopped in selling alcohol also at 10:30. As we have a liquor license that will allow us to go to 11:00, but we compromised with going dark at 11:00 so that everybody would be exiting before the end of the event even. So we compromised. We did no fireworks during this period of time. We traditionally have celebration of this type, and I don't know, some, several people said, just do fireworks. That'll draw a big crowd. But we didn't do fireworks for several years here on our celebration here. We compromised there. We did other, year one, we had a little issue with the, we were going to block the Elmwood Drive. It's a, it's a, you know, a situation where you have to control it. Second year, we did that, and it improved tremendously the control of that park area. Again, we're working with UNO security on this plan as well. Their interjection was to close that down and lock it down the entire event and earlier than when the, when the event starts. So we, we really improved the plan the second year and want to make more improvements this year and safeguard this park and anything we can do to make, you know, no disturbances as much as we can. But like I said, we've remedied a lot of those issues during our work with public, with public parks, with, with Matt Kalsovich and his team. And again, we want to make more improvements to the plan, but...
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We do have some lights on. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mike, good afternoon. You can sit down. If I got questions for you, I'll call you up. Thanks for being here today. I want to walk through, when I got elected to the city council in 2021, I was contacted by Mr. Mancuso and Taste of Omaha about the event at Elmwood Park. So at that time, I was drinking from a fire hose like several of us do when we get elected, and you, you get your feet under you. So I had a great meeting with Mike Mancuso right after June of 2021, and he was telling me about Taste of Omaha. So I coordinated with him that, number one, I've been at that event many, many years. It's a great event. The food is good. It's cooked. It's great. The beer is cold. The punch is good. Everything's great about the event. So I want to walk through as quickly as I can the meetings that I held. So September 14, 2021, I was new to the council, met with Mr. Mancuso. So we had a meeting with the Parks Rec and Matt Kalsovic, myself, Commissioner Jim Kavanaugh, Councilman Palermo, who was a great help to me new to the council, kind of helped me walk through this process. And also, I believe Senator John Kavanaugh wasn't in attendance, but he was a supporter of Taste of Omaha for Elmwood for, for that time as well. So I advocated for Taste of Omaha to be held one more year at Elmwood. There was a significant amount of pushback that I heard from neighbors that they didn't want to have it held at Elmwood for the summer of 2022. So that was on September 14. I called that meeting, and the notes were, "Councilmember Danny Bagley requests a meeting to discuss a Taste of Omaha event. This will follow the city council's pre-council meeting." So we had that meeting. And then we moved on from that, as I get my notes together here. There was another meeting that was held at Mike Mancuso's office with all the vested parties. There was, there was Public Works, there was Omaha Police, there was public safety from UNO. Many of the neighborhood members were there, and we talked about, in spite of the pushback from the neighbors not wanting to have the event at Elmwood, we had that meeting in Mike's office, and we laid the ground rules for what that would look like being held at Elmwood. Traffic signals from Public Works. They would have shuttle service that would be direct and where people can park to make it easier. They had public safety, Omaha Police. So at the end of that event, there was no calls to Omaha Police about any disturbances or any problems. So 2022 is done. And I pledge at that time, most important thing I want to say, in that meeting, I pledged to neighbors who were pushing back against having it in Elmwood for 2022. I pledge to them, as Mike said at that time, this is the last time we're going to have it in Elmwood. We made that clear. We made the stipulations. And to Mike's credit, he meant most of those. So we moved on. And that was in my rearview mirror. We deal with problems all the time on the council. In December of 2022, I was looking at the summary from the Parks Rec and Public Property Minutes. And again, this was in my rearview mirror. And again, this was in my rearview mirror, and the Taste of Omaha was referenced in here, and it says, "Taste of Omaha, Miller's Landing. The event needs to move from Elmwood Park. Since the city ended the lease with the damn bar and grill at Miller's Landing, they thought the venue would be a good fit for this event. It's moving from Elmwood Park." Rearview mirror. January 17, 2023, I get an email and a text about Omaha Parks Director reversed his possession, and I got a lot of respect from Matt, and I think he does a great job. But I wasn't notified of that until that email. So, I'm talking to constituents who are very upset because they were promised that it wouldn't be held at Elmwood beyond 2022. And that was a word that I gave my constituents who were upset, many were, to have it there. So, in February, in January 17 to '23, I responded to that email. I talked to the Parks Director. I said, "I will not be supporting Taste of Omaha at Elmwood Park liquor license. However, I would support it any other venue to have it." There's many places you can have this at, from CHI, Millworks, down to Councilmember Johnson's district, the Baxter Center. One of my colleagues suggested Zirinsky Park, beautiful park in Omaha. So, when we got to this point today, and I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and Mr. Mancuso, his reference, several of my neighborhood constituents that I represent, and I got a letter from the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance. There are 17 neighborhoods in this letter that all are in opposition to Elmwood Park for Taste of Omaha. And they cited their reasons. You can look at it. But my reasons for not supporting it, as I mentioned, are it's important that if any of us elected officials make a commitment to constituents, you have to live with that. And again, Big Mama's is here and several business owners. I've heard from many of them. Taste of Omaha is a great event. We don't want to hurt small businesses. It's a family event. It's great. I've attended it for years. I'll go to the next one. But I wanted to be clear that the promises were made, we're going to make one more year at Elmwood. We're going to make improvements. Somebody mentioned, is that in writing? I don't know. That could have already have been done. Make a commitment to the Parks Foundation. Great people there. They do great work for the city of Omaha. But I'm going to make a motion that this is denied for the liquor, the S D L for Elmwood Park, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same for the reasons I laid out. When you make commitments to constituents, I believe that's certainly what I'm going to honor, and I will support Taste of Omaha, any other venue that I mentioned. Baxter, CHI, by the way, were offered to Mr. Mancuso when I made clear the Parks Director in January, that work with him on a Plan B. Mike's family is legendary in this event planning. They do a great job back to his dad. I know he's got a Plan B because he knew that this maybe doesn't pass today. I want Taste of Omaha to move on for people who enjoy it, just not at Elmwood Park. So, that's why I make a motion here to deny this today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mike, if, Mancuso, if you could come up for a second. Thanks.
Hi, Bringer.
Name an address for the record, too.
Mike Mancuso, 7015 Spring Street.
Thanks. When this was at Heartland of America Park, how many, how many people attended on an annual basis in rough terms?
Yeah, the estimates are, again, just surveyed, but it's somewhere around 100,000 people over the three-day festival.
Three days. And similar numbers for when you headed to Elmwood or?
No surveys, but it was a well-received and very good traffic through the festival. And again, the big help that we had was having surface parking and stack parking with UNO right accessible to the event and doing a small shuttle on the south side of the campus. And again, UNO very pleased with our, working with them and the plan, and very excited, you know, to work with this one more year to do this plan. The, the other thing is that is interesting is I, this interim location was, was always to be until we can move back to the riverfront. So, when that changed, the promises had to also adjust because we can no longer do that in 2023. There's delays that happened that caused this particular event not to move back to that Heartland of America Park. So, that's why one more year here. I can put it in writing if you need it in writing, but next year, we will be on the riverfront because it will be completed, and it will be able to happen at the Heartland of America Park.
All right. People might think you and I talked about this beforehand, but I did not. You, you were going down the, the next line of questioning I was going to have. So, I mean, but for, and out of any control of, of yours, but for the delays and some of the construction associated with Riverfront Park, that's the only reason you're in front of us today to ask for one more year to do this at Elmwood Park, correct?
Correct. And as, as we've had many conversations, Dan and I have had conversations, and Vinny and I have, have had conversations. Vinny is, we've referenced another festival that moved around a lot in the city that really harms an event to happen successfully. We want them to have the best, the restaurants and, and these events to have the best opportunity to be successful, and we can move it all in. We can put it in somebody's backyard. But the problem with that is that for people, right now, we're in the Omaha Visitors Guide. We're in the Omaha Chamber Guide at Elmwood right now. We have a chance to change that for 2024, but we can't change 2023 with what was done previously in that pipeline. So, you get a lot of confusion moving around an event of this kind, of this size. So, that's very difficult. Zirinsky, you mentioned, and Matt's not going to speak yet, maybe on, on behalf.
I was, I think.
But Zirinsky is impossible for some of these locations that he mentioned.
Mike, you answered my question, so please.
Okay.
Keep it, keep it to the question I'm asking, okay? Don't get ahead of yourself.
All right. Thank you, Bringer.
All right. So, I, I know you've said it, but I want you to state it again for the record.
Yes.
Just state it very simply, please, that this is, that by no uncertain terms, this is the last time that you will be requesting it to be at Elmwood?
Correct.
Okay. So, all right, you can sit down now. So, I, I think I'm done with the questions for you, but thank you. I want to talk about, I mean, there, there've been some comments about the parks and our use of them, and, I mean, the parks are meant to be enjoyed by, by all, both the citizens of Omaha and really for our visitors. And I think of, actually, Mr. McGee really kind of highlighted this. It's, but for the liquor license, we probably wouldn't even be here today having this discussion. But because the liquor license is needed for the event, it gives the opportunity for, for one, to make those, to make, to make the, the arguments against having it at, at Elmwood. But I would tell you that if you look at Memorial Park, we do the, what used to be called the Fourth of July Celebration. I think we, that has kind of gone away from the Fourth of July, but still, that's, we have that large event in, in Memorial Park every year. Turner Park does Jazz on the Green every year. Elmwood Park, besides this, the, the festival, is, we have Earth Day there every year. Zirinsky has a series of music events that used to be actually, I think, underneath the Bob Carey Bridge in that park designated area before. So, my, my point is, is that we use our parks both for the, the passive activities and, and active activities with the, you know, the playgrounds and the ballfields, but we also use them for these kind of gatherings as well. And again, I, I don't think, look, I, when I, when I heard that this was, this was coming up, I too had concerns about it being held there after the, the promises that were, or the, we see agreements that were made in the past, that it wouldn't be, wouldn't be but for the, those first two years. But again, because of circumstances not in control of Taste of Omaha, and because of another park, the, the 100 acres of, of Riverfront Park, the Gene Leahy Mall, Heartland of America Park, and Lewis and Clark Landing, which, I mean, is, is, someone said $300 million. It's actually $400 million by the, at the end of the day, that we've invested in that. And thank God for philanthropic and charitable communities doing 350 million of that. And those are, and we're going to have, we have, we have a shell down at, at Gene Leahy Mall for those types of entertainment purposes as well. Those are the types of activities that I think we want our parks to offer to our citizens. So, I, I respect Councilmember Begley's motion to, to deny this, but again, I think the only reason we're here today is because of circumstances not in control of the, the promoter of the event. And I think that with one more year at, at this event, I think would, would certainly be acceptable, knowing that it will be moved back to its original location next year.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, this, I want to ask my first question to the clerk. At this point in time, we're already at April. This is in like eight weeks, I believe. I don't believe there'd be enough time to even get another liquor license at this point for another location.
No, there is. It has to be submitted to the Liquor Control Commission 10 business days prior to the event.
10 business days. So, that, but that would give them, then they would have to find a new location and get it submitted in, basically in a month. I mean, okay. And Mr. Mancuso, if I could ask you, if there's no liquor license granted today, oh, sorry. I didn't know you went all the way back. If it weren't approved today, there's no way you would be able to move this location at this point in time in such a short period of time, is there?
It's very difficult, and there's enough challenges already that we've delayed to where we are now by having this approval or process happening at this point. But usually, it's earlier. But anyway, we, we, it would be challenging, yes.
So, you could do it? So, you could move the location somewhere else by June 2nd?
Everything would be very challenging to do any kind of movement. And like I said, there was a lot of pre-planning and work that went into this location to make it successful and have it happen in the way that it did. And like I said, those elements are very hard to duplicate, and so, to take something that's working and positive, you can have a lot of complaints, and City Hall can be very busy. But we, we suggest a continuation for one more year because it's showing to be successful and no complaints and no problems.
Okay. I'm going to, remember how Councilmember Harding said you just answered the questions that we're asking you? That would be very helpful. We need to move on, and we've got lots of people here on lots of other issues.
It would be next to impossible, but, you know, you know, we would help, we have a great community that would back up this event because they believe in it, like many of the people that have come forward.
How many restaurants and small businesses participate in this?
It's over 40 restaurants and food companies that participate, but sponsors as well as in Marketplace, which is, you know, a fun shopping experience while families are attending.
So, how many restaurants and small businesses participate in this? Just give me a number.
I'd say over 150.
150?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and most of those are local? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's the point of Taste of Omaha? You're celebrating local business?
Flavor of Omaha and a chance to, for the community to get together, yes.
Okay. And I, I think, and that, that's all, that's the only question I have for you. I, I think my, my hesitation, and you can sit down if you'd like, is I don't want to punish the restaurants, small business owners, the, the people that have their crafts, over 150 people that showcase their small businesses. So, I understand that the, that people who live around Elmwood find that these three days may be some inconvenience to them. If this was something permanent, if it was going to be all summer long, I, I think I would be a little more hesitant. I can make the promise that if Elmwood is up next year for this, then I will vote no. So, I will say I'm a no vote today for next year. I'm going to be a yes vote today to approve the liquor license because I don't want to risk not having the Taste of Omaha. Whether I agree with how it happened, I fully support Councilman Begley's kind of being a little upset with what he was told last year and then wasn't made aware of it again until after January, and it puts him in a very difficult position. And I, I've been in that position, so I really sympathize. However, I don't want to see Taste of Omaha not happen this year. So, I'm going to support the local business owners that are planning and are already paid to attend this event and showcase their items because I think that's what makes us a community. And I understand it's going to be maybe a little convenient to have a road closed for three days through Elmwood, and the music is stopping at 10:00. And I think that's a really good, good thing. The liquor will stop at 10:30. They're going to have security, working with UNO Security. And I am going to hold our Parks Director, I'm going to assume that if there's any damage done, Mr. Kalsovich, you're going to hold Taste of Omaha responsible and make them pay for any damages that are done to our park. Is that correct?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, that is correct.
Well, and notice how I said "our" park. This is not the neighborhood association's park. This is the City of Omaha Park. We enjoy all the parks, and we should, Matt, I think, do we have 256 parks in Omaha?
That is correct.
All right. I hear, good, I remember that one. But they belong to all of us. We, we all, we all pay our taxes to help maintain them. They are all our parks, and we should be able to travel around Omaha and enjoy all the different parks that we have. This is one time when we can enjoy Elmwood Park. I look forward to having it back downtown at the riverfront where we have, have invested quite a bit of money, and a lot of the philanthropic donors have invested a lot of money. So, I do think that, I understand that it's three days of inconvenience, but I think we can probably make it through this year. Again, though, making my promise, it'll be a no vote for Elmwood next year if it comes back. So, there's time to find a new event location by next year.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is no doubt that this event is just a wonderful hit to the Omaha community. I mean, I mean, we all know that. The numbers stack up. The opportunities are there for small businesses. And I mean, I mean, we, there's no question about the impact that this event brings to the Omaha area. But promises, promises were made. As a community, as leaders, we should think real seriously about keeping our promises. So, again, the following questions that I have have no reflection on the impact of this event because I have no questions about the importance of the event. So, when we decide to report what Councilwoman Johnson said, please get the facts correct. I did not say that this event was not important. It is. Having that said, I have a few questions for the record. Was there a promise made to move this location this year? Anyone in the city can answer that question, can speak at this time.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. As was mentioned, the intent around projected timelines was to move back to the riverfront. The decisions that were made were about the circumstance that's been mentioned. I think the intent of our interest in hearing the voice of the neighbors and those around Elmwood just got ahead of our process as far as being able to line up everything date-wise.
So, I take that means, yes, a promise was made. We did tell this group that the location would not be present this year. Yes or no?
The interest, the commentary was about trying to work to get this back to where it was originally as soon as possible around the circumstances that have been mentioned and that I also just did.
So, this community was never told that this event would not be held this year at Elmwood Park 2022.
The commentary was about our intent to get it back to the riverfront as soon as it was possible, and if that was this year, that would have been the case, but it is not available now.
When did the city become aware that they were unable to fulfill not having this event at Elmwood Park?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Sometime, forgive me for not having that exact date in front of me, toward the end of 2022, in communications with the team developing and ultimately who will manage the riverfront, talking about the delays. First, in regards to the Gene Leahy Mall that bumped back, the other two projects that are in motion right now, again, the footprint, or the historical footprint of the Taste of Omaha event.
So they end up 2021?
2022.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm behind a year here. So Mike, go ahead.
I'm sorry, less, around six months ago. Four to six months ago in that timeframe, about.
So would it be safe to say that October of 2022, we, the city, became aware that we would still need to have this event at Elmwood Park?
I'd have to look up that exact date, but again, that fall, late fall timeframe, yes.
Okay. So what did we do to mitigate these concerns of the people that would be directly impacted by this event being held this year at the park?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. When we found out that information, we passed that along to Mr. Mancuso and the Taste of Omaha group to talk about the options and scenarios. And certainly Elmwood, having the recent history there of what was done and the understanding of the function of the event there, was reviewed and discussed about that being the right fit. Again, there are some other potential scenarios, and I know people have mentioned some of those. At this point, at that point, there was information shared on behalf of supporting the event at Elmwood, perhaps in direct contradiction or, or contrast to that of the neighborhood and thus the exploration of this, what we're discussing here evolved.
So the Neighborhood Associations, there were three of them that were identified today. When were they notified that this event would be held or there would be a conversation that this event would be held at the park?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. That information was sent in early 2023 on the heels of that dialogue with Mr. Mancuso and the Taste of Omaha group. And again, trying to emphasize the minimizing of additional new work for our team or, or that event being relocated. And as an event provider, myself, ourself as a department, we know the logistical challenges of that. And certainly, I know some have mentioned the impact to those who participate in the event and wanting to minimize some of that. So definitely a, a large list of, of things from both sides to consider about trying to get this situated for one more year before the return to the riverfront.
So January 1, 2023, the Neighborhood Association was notified that there was going to be a probability that the event would be held at the park, correct?
That is, early '23 timeframe, yes, I don't have that date in front of me, but that is correct. They were notified of that change, potential change.
And may I ask, why did we not choose to have this event at the riverfront?
As, in regards to the historic location?
I understand that the historical location is not prepared, it's not ready to go. However, the riverfront is close proximity of the historical location. So I'm asking, why was it, or if there was any consideration given to offering this event to be held January of this year at the riverfront?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, that location is one that we've identified as a place in the future we would have this potential, this kind of a potential event at. In this case, the issues around relocating the event two years in a row and some of the sentiment on the side supporting Mr. Mancuso and the Taste of Omaha event and the difficulties and challenges around that, especially when they were targeting and they made us aware of the, what Mr. Mancuso has stated here today, that was their intent to return, and they've been working through the logistics of returning to that riverfront location. That was a lot of what the counter information, I guess, to that of the neighborhoods' concerns about Elmwood Park, were driving the, you know, potential extension that we're discussing here as opposed to a move this year and then a move again next year to that other location when it's available.
But given the fact that we just built the riverfront and we're promoting that, that's what we want, attraction, opportunities, big things like what the Omaha, Taste of Omaha would generate, again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about what we're saying versus our actions. Why wouldn't we want, I'm concerned about why we wouldn't want that event to be held at the riverfront versus getting the unwelcoming feeling from those that will be impacted by this directly versus, yeah, I live on 24th and Lake Street, I'm not gonna be directly impacted by that. So yeah, I can pretty much say that it's no big deal, but should we not give some concern, considerations to those in the impacted area as well as the fact that we had made a gentleman 's promise that we were going to move that? And then when we told them in January that we couldn't do it, we had plenty enough time at that point to change the marketing, to get the liquor license. We had plenty of time in January 2023 at that point to make the necessary changes, but we waited until today at the heels, at the, you know, at the last moment. So I'm concerned about poor planning on our part. Why should it be passed down to the constituents? I support my Councilmember Begley and, and, and his motion. I'll be voting in opposition to this.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a beauty of going fifth here. You have to scratch out all the questions you were gonna ask that had already been asked, and it throws everything, so bear with me. I, I do want to bring everything back to the basics of where we are on this agenda item, which is not voting for Taste of Omaha in Elmwood Park. That's already gonna happen, even with phones ringing, it's already gonna happen. What we're here voting on today is the liquor license for the Taste of Omaha.
Folks, you need to turn those phones off or please leave, if you can't get them off, or silence starts to vibrate, please.
All right, thanks.
Sorry, Mr. Palermo.
That's okay. Nobody was listening anyway, now they are.
Well, y'all have retention now.
Great, great. So back to what we're here for. The Taste of Omaha is in Elmwood Park. This decision has already been made. It doesn't come before us at the City Council. The decision before us today is if the SDL, which is the Special Designated License for the Liquor, would be accepted for the Taste of Omaha. And that question, if the taste can still happen in Elmwood Park, would solely fall on Taste of Omaha, Inc., if they feel the profits are still there to have the festival, to support all the small businesses. Gladys, thanks for being here. I don't know if you remember when I drug Councilmember Johnson down to your place. Best catfish I ever had, I didn't taste it at the Taste of Omaha. I actually went to the brick and mortar and had it there. I still tell people about that, so thank you for being here. And that's an example. You don't have to go to the Taste of Omaha to support these small businesses. So that's the question that we have in front of us because there is a spin, and trust me, I, I know all about the spin. It isn't, we don't support Taste of Omaha and we don't want it. No, we absolutely do want it. But some of us have already made that promise. We don't get to sit here with the luxury of saying, well, one more year. We promise we'll sit here, and if this comes before us, one more year, we're not gonna vote for it. Well, Councilmember Begley and myself have already been in these meetings, and he left a few out. Because I remember meeting with Mr. Mancuso, who I have the utmost respect for and his family, a meeting at Sons Italy, a meeting at Canilias, different places we met to discuss the taste. And a year back, the discussion was, please help us out. The riverfront is not done. We need to have the Taste of Omaha in Elmwood Park one more year. And in that meeting, what happened was the Parks Director, again, who's doing a great job, he said, no, we're not having it in Elmwood Park. That, that deal has already happened, and they have to find another place to have it. So you know what happens? Councilmember Begley and myself literally begged him, please, let us have this one more time. This is how important this is to us. We know there are Danny's constituents and voters, voters across the city who are against this, but we know how important it is. So the next year comes about, and, and we think this is a done deal, right? We've, we, we have already made the ask of what the Parks Director has said it's not gonna happen. And we have been led to believe all along the path that it's not gonna happen. And, and I remember the conversation I had with Mr. Mancuso at Sons Italy. I go, this is out of our hands. We're, we're not gonna have, you're gonna have to go to the next level of government to make this happen. And I believe that's what happened, and that's why the Parks Director changed his mind. Because we were told that it was not gonna happen again. So put the dots together and you'll figure that out. So the, the question is still there. Is the SDL needed to have the Taste of Omaha? Because we're not here to decide if it's in Elmwood Park. The decision's already been made that it's gonna be in Elmwood Park. And when we talk about parks, because we throw that around freely like parks, right? They're just parks, they're just parks. No, they're important. Parks are vital to this community. And, and what I can tell you is I sat in a meeting earlier today, and the conversation was, what old equipment can we pass down to the Parks Department? Because that's how this works. Other departments get the better stuff, and we pass it down to the Parks Department, and, and they get what they can get. Because our Parks Department employees work as hard as they possibly can with what we give them. So why would we make it any harder for them when the discussion is, well, it's just grass? It is just grass. But there's Parks Department employees that are working with what they don't have to make this grass look good for the citizens of Omaha. And, and truly, the parks aren't just the parks they are in beauty because of the City of Omaha. It takes the buy-in from the residents that live in the area. It's the buy-in from the Neighborhood Associations and those who surround the parks to actually take care of them. That's who goes out on weekends and picks up litter when they need to and organize different events. So as I wrap this up, because nobody's listening again, it, it does go out to the voters. And this week especially, from roundabouts to the SDL about Taste of Omaha, I haven't had this flurry of emails since the library. So that tells you, I will just tell you, it's a lot. Most of my responses are, thanks for your email, I appreciate it. No offense to them, but that's, if they want a response, that's all I can give them with all the feedback we have heard from people, from groups who buy into their parks in the City of Omaha and talk about how important they are. So I can't use, if it's gonna be there next year, I'll vote against it. I've already made that decision last year, and I'm standing by that, that we ever, we've already had this discussion. And it's unfortunate that those that believe like me that it shouldn't be there have changed their mind, and that's why we're here today. So again, this isn't against Taste of Omaha. The event can still happen. We're here to decide if there's an SDL that's gonna be approved or not. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed, but I, I know that Mr. Manhart, your name was mentioned in the conversation, and I saw that you were interested in speaking or addressing the council about that. I'll recognize you if you'd like to say.
Yeah, Peter Manhart, 312 South 57th Street. The only one, reason I wanted to get up, I'm here to speak on another issue, but Mike mentioned my name, and I don't want any confusion. I am on the board of the Dundee Memorial Park and have been for 17 years, I'm a past president, and we are against the, the liquor license for the Taste of Omaha, just with all of the other neighborhoods in the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance. So I don't want any confusion there. We have been telling them for years, use Baxter Parking Lot, you'd have apps, you'd have, everyone in the room would love it. You could still serve Nina's wonderful food, wonderful food, and you can do it in Baxter Parking Lot. It would house everybody, it's absolutely enormous, and everybody would have a good time. Dan and I could still go and have a good time, and, but it, you wouldn't have more than a dozen neighborhoods saying they don't want it. Obviously, the fireworks at Memorial Park and jazz in the green isn't, it's not a very good example because everybody loves those. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President.
I'm gonna have the audience refrain from any clapping or any reaction to testifiers or, or councilmembers, please. Thank you.
I'll be much briefer on this go-around. It, it was referenced, when were notifications made to neighborhood groups or others? And I can tell you, because I was on the email, and it was January 17th, from the Parks Director to some folks in the neighborhoods. And I was carboning in on that on the next day, Wednesday, January 18th. It was from some very upset neighbors that Mr. Manhart mentioned Dundee Memorial Park. I have the 17 from the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance all against it. Email I got on the 20th that I responded to, one of the neighborhood people. Thank you for the email, for all the work you do on behalf of your neighborhood. I do not favor 2023 Taste of Omaha event being held back in Elmwood Park. I encourage Director Kalkovik to work with Mr. Mancuso to find another location where our citizens continue enjoying this wonderful event. That was January 20th. I replied back later on to Mr. Kalkovik. Matt, please be advised and will not be supporting SDL for Elmwood Park Taste of Omaha. I would encourage you to let Mr. Mancuso know to have a Plan B location. The Mancuso family spans multi-decades in this community. I am sure Mike already has this in mind and will have a different venue as a backup. I spoke to somebody about maybe having it at Baxter. I know your team can also assist in coming up with the spots that can meet the continued needs for this fine event with ample time to do so. That was January 20th. I had an email from the Parks Director when we talked about that, and going back and forth on, you know, the timing of this event, and Mr. Kalkovik, March 8th, he replied back to me, the last sentence is, if a change is prompted for this season, we will do what we must to make that happen. So if it's not Elmwood, my good friend Councilmember Palermo said, if the SDL gets denied, it doesn't stop the event. I tried to hedge this off in January to give time, if it's not Elmwood, that there would be a Plan B. I want to be real clear here. My good friend Councilmember Melton, I think it was, said 150 businesses. We support those businesses. A lot of them are in my district, everybody's. We support Taste of Omaha. It's not about anti-business. This is about making agreements and living with those and moving to find another venue that everybody can enjoy and live with. So I, that's the last of my comments, but I appreciate everybody being here. And by the way, Councilmember Palermo mentioned the emails. I, I got a ton of emails in opposition to this, and I didn't even need to read the emails to know what my commitment was to my constituents. Having it 22 in Elmwood, as I read in these emails and dates that you can rewind it on your screen, find another place. It's not our fault that this doesn't pass, that it's whatever, eight weeks out. There was time and there was effort. It should have been done way before Jan, April the 4th. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a question for Matt Kalsovich. So when did we originally make an agreement with the Mancusos to move Taste of Omaha to Elmwood Park? Do you know the dates?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. To clarify, you're saying the first time that was moved?
When we made the agreement to move it to Elmwood.
I don't necessarily have the exact date of that commitment, for that was prior to my starting with employment with the city. I don't necessarily have the exact date of that commitment, for that was prior to my starting with employment with the city.
Maybe I can ask Mr. Mancuso. Mike, could you come up?
I believe he stepped out for a moment.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director.
Well, let me ask the question this way. Was it a three-year agreement for 2020, '21, and '22 that we agreed to have the festival there?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. That was the initial thought process about the time it would take to reactivate the space there. Again, they verbalized today they're planning to return to at the Riverfront. 2020 was canceled, so there was a debate even right after that about, was it three calendar years or was it three years of the event? And again, some of which has been derailed just by the delays of the facility where they're planning to return.
Okay, well, Mike, I guess the reason I asked that, my point was that there was an agreement, I believed, I think there was an agreement for 2020, and it got canceled because of COVID. That wasn't anything that any of us could do, wasn't anything that Mike had any impact on. I didn't have any impact on, nobody in this room did. But it was canceled, and the event did not happen. So I view this as kind of an extension. As things happen like COVID, things happen like construction delays. So we didn't get the park done in time for the event to get moved to the Riverfront. So we're pivoting and trying to make it lemonade out of lemons, if you will. Three years ago, you would never found this book on my bookshelf, but I'm reading it right now. It's called Happy City. The author is Charles Montgomery, and I know I'm kind of a nerd reading this. Again, I probably would not have read this three years ago, but it has to do with good urban design. And I'm into it far enough to know that public spaces like this, like Elmwood Park, is what makes community. It's really where people can find a good feeling. They can be happy at Elmwood Park during an event like this. And I think it's important for us to view these public spaces not much differently than the Greeks viewed their common spaces or the Romans used their common spaces. These spaces are to be used to help create community for us to feel good about living in Omaha. So I'm going to be voting for it, because I think it's a space, and there's 100,000 people that are from all over the city that enjoy the event, and I don't think it's totally dependent on alcohol. For me, that would not be a deal breaker, but for somebody else, it might be that they want to enjoy a Miller Lite, you know, at the party. So I'll be voting for it, and I appreciate that it's happening. I appreciate that it's going to go back to the Riverfront. I think that is a better space. I agree, that is a better space. But I think we have to pivot. We have to be flexible, and we have to be willing to make things work where we can.
Thank you. I do think Mr. Mancuso stepped out for a moment, but I would just add that I also have a lot of respect for him and his family. And I served on the planning board with his father, Bob Mancuso, for many years. A great individual, committed to our city, and a great promoter as well. And I do support events throughout our city. I also appreciate General Murphy's testimony. I think he's right. We need more of these type of events throughout our city. Having said that, it's really unusual. I would not support a council member in the district where they reside when they have serious concerns about a liquor license or an SDL. And I think we have that case here with Councilman Bagley. We happened to be in the office together the day. We found out about this, which was certainly surprising to us and definitely surprising to our neighborhoods that day, and the emails were immediate to all of us with that shock, frankly, that it was happening. And we were quite surprised, too, and immediately in damage control. So I get that. As you may know, District 1 is just across the street, all north of Dodge Street, but we share a lot of constituents, a lot of neighborhood associations. I'm in Memorial Park and Elmwood Park pretty much every day, so I understand the concern he's expressing. Should this not be approved today, I would just say I'd be willing to work with the applicant and the Mancuso family to find an appropriate alternative as well and do that very quickly, as that would need to happen. Having said that, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for Mr. Mancuso. My question, I see that he's not in the room. My question is, if this liquor license is not approved, will you then still have the event at Elmwood Park? Because I would suggest that that would not be the case without the approval of a liquor license, because that's a generator to the whole event.
Mike stepped away. Bob Mancuso, Jr., 122 South 51st Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Yeah, the event wouldn't happen. The alcohol and that part of the event helps bring in revenue for the company and for the event Taste of Omaha. So it would definitely not happen. At this late of a stage, we would just have to move on, and so go from there.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I just wanted to point out my line of questioning whether, I mean, although it wasn't directly related to what was being voted on here today, it definitely had a significant impact.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
One last thing, yeah. Things change. Things happen over time. Everyone has good intentions, so the concepts of, "We would like to move it back to the Riverfront," all those good things, that's how the plan was. Things were delayed, and so I think Mike was trying to portray that some things come out of our hands, and versus moving the event two or three times prior to it going back was a bigger obstacle in trying to make the event successful. So therefore, they tried to work with the neighborhood associations and all the different groups to make it possible and successful. Let's try to go one more year, and we know things change. But you have to understand that life isn't set how we'd like, you know? Things change over time. Things change every day in our lives. So you just got to be flexible, and you try to do your best and to try to overcome that and say, hey, "We do have to go back to the Elmwood one more year, because it'll be ready the next year because of delays, and we're sorry about that for the people that may have been upset, but it's minimal effect on their neighborhood association." I live in Dundee Neighborhood Association. I live on 51st Avenue, which is right next to Dodge, and I see Memorial Park has an event, very big event, and it is not intrusive on the neighborhoods. People look forward to those events. They look forward to going down there. You can walk down to the Taste of Omaha and enjoy it. There's all the different issues they've already brought up about safe neighborhood, cleanup, and things going well have been positive, and there's been no issues with the Taste of Omaha being at Elmwood. So I would ask again, for some of you that are voting against or are not thinking about it, to relook at that and to say, "Things have changed. We did have good intentions. The council had good intentions. The city of Omaha had good intentions, but things were delayed, and therefore, we had to relook at the situation, and they chose it easier, and it might be better. Let's try to go one more year at Elmwood, and then we'll go from there." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I did have one question I forgot to ask the city clerk earlier. I do not remember ever voting on an SDL in the time I've been here. Depending on how the vote goes today, could this be vetoed by the mayor?
No.
Okay, so SDL is whatever the vote is here. It is.
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What I will say, when we talk about changes, a festival near and dear to my heart, Santa Lucia, I couldn't even begin to count how many times that festival has changed locations. And myself and my family have still continued to go there, and so has everybody else I know. So if Taste of Omaha does not decide to move forward with having their event at Elmwood Park, I would still encourage everyone to, wherever they are, to go there and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There is a motion to deny and a second. Roll call.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three.
Thank you for your testimony. Next item, please.
Item 10, to consider a long-form application for a Class C liquor license for 415 located at 415 South 13th Street.
Councilmembers, this is a long-form application on number 10, so we'll have a little bit different process than the previous items we just had here. I'll explain just briefly for everyone in attendance, so they know what to expect here. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with Omaha Municipal Code, Section 1533, and that starts with a presentation by the applicant. And then we'll have any questions from Mr. Weeson or any questions from council members of the applicant. Then we'll allow for anyone who might be in favor of the license to speak. Then Mr. Weeson and any council members will have an opportunity to ask questions. We'll then take anyone who's opposed to the license, including Ms. Cunningham, who is a representation of the applicant, I believe. And then also have Mr. Weeson and council members have a chance to have questions. And then we'll hear from the Omaha Police Department representing the city, who is Sergeant Raz today. And then again, Mr. Weeson and council members will have a chance to ask questions. And then, at that time, the applicant does have the opportunity to cross-examine those people testifying in opposition. And at the end, we'll give the applicant a chance to have any rebuttal they may seek from things they may have heard during these conversations. And then the public hearing will be closed. All right, so having said that, we'll start with the hearing and vote on number 10, and we'll start with the presentation from the applicant. Right on cue, your cellphone went off. A reminder to folks, to keep your cellphones off or turn them to vibrate, please. Thank you.
I think I accidentally turned it back on somewhere in the last proceeding. Deborah Cunningham, representing the 415. We're here on the long-form application, which everyone at the council has received. Present today are-
Ms. Cunningham, your address, please.
Pardon?
Your address for the record.
900 South 75th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114.
Thank you.
Present today are both owners of the 415. In addition, we have everyone that represents the security force other than people that are hired in. In other words, the people who are in charge, as well as the people who are predominantly involved in the security. I understand from the city attorney that presented for the city council's review are the incident reports that were before the city council a few months ago. They started in February of 2021. Then they went into 2022, ending in September of 2022. I'm representing to the council that most of these took place outside this bar, that the security within the bar tried to handle things as best they could. After receiving the incident reports, new security was hired. Outside doubled up for most of that period of time inside, so that you had security both pat-down, ID check, inside the bar, so that bar personnel wouldn't have to be directly involved in some of those activities. Bar business has slowed down a little. So the number of people involved in security right now is one person less than it used to be. But as soon as traffic in the old market starts growing again, security will be increased. I think it shows the effectiveness of the plan by the absence of incident reports since last September. These people have tried very, very hard. Some of the people who are involved in these incident reports as, I guess you'd say, complainants, but they were people actually ticketed by the city of Omaha, by the Omaha police, were simply fine for this behavior. But we're here because this can impact people's livelihoods, who have been in this business for 21 years. So I understand that the nature of this proceeding is to allow the council to address questions specifically to the owners and the applicants of the long-form application. They are also the people who are present at the incident reports. So because of the length of time and because I know that docket number, agenda number 48, is going to take quite a bit of time, I'd like to go to what questions or whatever, because it may move this through.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I am prepared to have every one of these people testify to the absence of problems at the 415 since they started last October.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate that. At this time then, I would allow Mr. Weeson, if he has any questions.
Brian Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. I just have one brief question at this present time, given the statements and lack of testimony that have been presented so far. And that would be to ask the applicant to confirm that their previous liquor license was for a Class I license, which is consumption of alcoholic liquor on the premises only, and that the applicant has submitted a long-form application seeking to upgrade their license to a Class C license, which would be consumption on premises and sale of package for consumption off premises.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham? Go ahead.
My name is Dimitri Fontes, one of the owners. 9235 Madison Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68127. Yeah, we decided to change the license from Class I to Class C, so we can give some packages at the end of the night or before the end of the night. A lot of people are asking us to get some to-go stuff, so that's the only reason why I'm changing to a C license. And I found the opportunities, we did the prolonged form, to upgrade to that license.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from council members at this point? Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. Fontes.
Yes.
I had a question. So you just stated that you submitted an application for an upgrade in the license. Would you consider going back to the original classification?
Yes.
And not ask for the upgrade?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Yes, thank you. And you have been in front of the law committee on a number of occasions. There have been numerous tavern reports. I'm not going to go into whether they were inside or outside, but people were drinking in your bar at some point. Please detail the difference. What have you done in security since the last time you were in front of our law committee?
Yeah, last time, we brought Ms. Regina here, the CEO, she's part-owner with a Four Horsemen Company. So since then, we, it was about September or October, I think, when we were here. Since then, we had three security guys from 11 to 2 o'clock until December, until it started getting cold. Then we went down from December until now, end of December until now. We're down to two people, and then we're going to go back to three when the weather gets a little better.
Who heads your security? Who manages security?
Kevin McCollum manages the security. Regina's company is the hands-on on the weekends especially, because that's when we get busy.
Would one of your security people be willing to come up and testify?
Yes, all three of them. And April is here.
How about I won't select. I'll let you select. Which one of you would like to come up and answer security questions? I know we've spoken to at least two out of the three of you before, and you're all competent to speak about it, so.
Deborah Cunningham, attorney for 415. There is a difference between the nights they work. That's why more than one came down, so.
No, and you know what? I appreciate the fact that all of you came down. If you could just state your name and your address for the record.
April Lorenz, 2939 Blondo, apartment 201, 68111.
Thanks, Ms. Lorenz. Could you give us some detail about how you, who is there at the bar, what the hours are, and what you do to maintain the security while you're there?
I arrive around 11:30, 11:45. The shift starts at 12, from 12 to 2. I have been there since December.
December of '22?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
When they enter the facility, I watch as they provide ID, pay cover, and I pat them down. If they are men, they get fully patted down. If they are females, I search purses. I make sure that any bulging pockets get tapped. We make sure that no outside food or alcohol comes into the bar and no weapons.
Okay, and then what about leaving? Do you watch for people leaving the bar?
Always. As they leave, I pretty much stand at the door the majority of the night. I walk through, make sure everything's okay throughout the night, but for the most part, I'm sort of stationary at the door. So everybody that either enters or exits has to pass me.
And I understand that security can't control everything that goes on between patrons. That's just a fact for any bar. But if you notice that maybe there's unruly people that are in the bar and then leave the bar, are you also concerned about what's going on outside?
Yes, ma'am. That's part of the reason why I stand at the door. Sometimes I'm right inside, sometimes I'm right outside. If I notice any kind of movement from the outside, I will go stand outside until I make sure everything is calm or there's nobody out there.
And if things aren't calm, what do you do?
I will address whatever is going on, ask what the situation is, try to figure out- I will address whatever is going on, ask what the situation is, try to figure out and do conflict resolution.
Okay. What if that doesn't work?
If that doesn't work, I kindly ask them to leave. If they don't want to leave, then we will exit them.
Okay. And I guess my only concern is, is I hear, I don't hear anything about ever calling Omaha Police. So if you see that somebody is in danger outside, or that there are people gathering and there could be a disturbance, just like the numerous tavern reports we have received. And I guess my concern is, what I hear is not our fault from 415. It might be just outside our door, but not my fault. So can you tell me what your security protocol is for dealing with problems that incur, that incur sometimes inside your bar, sometimes outside your bar? What is your protocol?
If there is a problem that occurs inside of the bar, first, we try conflict resolution. If we cannot come to a resolution, then they are exited from the bar. If they continue from there, then we call 911.
Okay.
Half the time, the minute you exit them from the bar, they pretty much walk away.
All right. There's somebody else from security that may have something to add. And actually, I've heard, I've heard from her before. We've had some discussions, so.
Correct.
Yes. Could you, for the record, you have to state your name.
Regina Davis, 2905 North 125th Avenue, 68164. If there is a altercation or anything that happens in the bar, what happens is one individual is escorted out. The other individual will remain in until we make sure that the other individual has left the premises. We don't let them both go out and continue with their argument. We separate them so that there's not a problem.
So you're, you are trying to control it before it goes outside?
Yes, ma'am.
And I, my only concern is, and we do hear this from bars, well, we don't want a tavern report, therefore, we're not reporting anything, and we're not calling anything to avoid a tavern report. And then what happens is it's gonna lead to escalation later on, because no one wants to call the police to try and prevent maybe altercations. And what is, what's your protocol for determining when you will notify law enforcement?
If an individual does not want to comply, we will call OPD. We have no problem. They are normally right outside our area, so we go and summons them, and they'll come and assist, and we will fill out a band and bard so that neither individual will be able to come back to the facility.
How many band and bards do you think that you've filled out?
In the last six months, I'm gonna say about three.
Okay. And could you please, just for everybody else, how long have you been with 415?
Since October of 2022.
Okay. And that's my recollection as well, but I wanted everybody else to know. We're going into spring, so I understand you've had this protocol in place for the winter. But you know, and I know, the winter is a lot easier than the spring and the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you, what are you gonna do differently moving into spring if your liquor license is granted?
We will continue with what our process is currently. We probably will add more people because you'll have an influx of people that like to come out because the weather is nice. They like to linger around a little bit more, so we will probably deter them from doing that.
And do you work with the owners when it comes to, do you have promoters that are coming into bars, that are coming into the bar? Do you have promoters and then promoting events?
No, we have not had that.
Okay. And I did notice on here that you have DJs, but you're not having the promoters that send out the flyers for events?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And how many security are, do you have right, currently, right now?
Currently, there's only two people there because of the slow people, amount of people that come in and out of the bar. But we've had three, sometimes four.
And so you have two people there whenever the bar is, from the time of opening to closing there, currently you have two?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're gonna increase that as the, as the bar maybe gets busier in the spring and the summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate it. And I do think, there is one thing, I think you do run a tight ship. I just sometimes think that you get overwhelmed by the number of people that sometimes come into the bar. What are your thoughts?
I don't get overwhelmed with too much of anything. But you can get overwhelmed, but I, I mean, I don't have that problem. And the people I put there normally don't have that problem neither.
And so are you providing, and when you say you're gonna add people, are you going to provide that training, or are you looking for people that have already been trained, or a little both?
We will train, and we look for those type of people too that have already had that training.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem.
And I, if I could call just the owner back up real quick, or Ms. Cunningham, maybe I'll, you could probably answer this. And I can't remember, somebody asked this, or if I heard it whispered. Currently, they, your clients applied for Class C.
Right.
I mean, we're actually considering recommending a denial of the liquor license completely, and they're actually asking to expand the sale of their alcohol, which I have to say, Ms. Cunningham, when I saw that, well, I, I won't repeat what I said, but I thought, well, this, there have been issues there, and a lot of issues outside of the bar, and my thought is now they want to just sell alcohol so that now the alcohol can be drank outside the bar, which is half the problem that the police officers are reporting they've had. So would your client be willing to drop the application for a Class C and make it remain a Class I?
Let's explain that. First of all, I had not been aware of the modification until after I got a copy of the long form, at which time they said, well, someone suggested that if you had to go do all this, then you should do it all at once as opposed to coming back. I went, no. Probably we should just fix the problem that's there, address the issues under the original license. He is quite comfortable with not asking for that, because this wasn't supposed to be something where, and we discussed this at length, where it's like public off-sale. That was never what was contemplated in the first place, which is why I thought it was just better to withdraw that. I just didn't have an option at the time to know where people's questions were.
I understand. And you can actually do it right now on, on the record. And I, I'm gonna let Councilman Begley, it's his district, and I know he has some other things he'd like to discuss with you. That was just one, and I'm gonna support whatever key requests. Just like, we've, we have a history here. We've tried to work with the owners and the bar. We want our business owners to have success, but we also can't, as you know, and as we've talked about, we can't have repeated calls from Omaha Police. Which brings me to my final person. And Mr. Weason, do you have anyone here from Omaha Police, or are you comfortable providing any reports that we've had over the last 12 months? Really, I think we've started, there were issues with this bar at least two years ago when I started. We've had multiple calls in front of Law Committee, but could you give us a recap of the issues?
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. According to the procedure that we have to follow in the municipal code, Section 15-33, there is a specific time for the city and law enforcement agencies to present information as part of this proceeding, and that's not here yet. That comes further down.
Oh, I just jumped ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I was wondering, I'm like, why haven't we heard from Omaha Police? Okay.
Sergeant Mraz will be here, and he does have copies of the tavern reports that the council considered at the last hearing on to whether or not to start the long-form process. And you can also answer questions about his experience down there and just the general police presence that is required by the bar.
Okay. So the, so at this point, I have no further questions for the bar. I will have further questions for Omaha Police when they are able to present their testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I serve on the Law Committee with my good friend, Councilmember Melton, and my good friend, Councilmember Palermo. And this is the first one of these long forms that I've been through. And when we brought 415 in, Ms. Cunningham, you were there, I believe, was October.
Right.
And there are a lot of issues that will go through here that I, for the sake of time, I won't go into those now. One thing I, a couple of things I wanted to ask. One, I'm just curious, his, the Dimitri or Vasilius, if I said their names correct, have you guys ever had any contact? I'm just curious with the Old Market Neighborhood Association. Is business owners down there? Can one of you come up? Whatever, there's fine.
Vasilius Fontas, 1006 Howard Street, Omaha, 68102. So Begley, if you don't mind repeating again the question?
No problem. So have you ever had any communication with the Old Market Neighborhood Association that is part of your area down there?
As a resident also of the Old Market, even if I know a lot of people are involved, I never attend any of those meetings, to be honest. But I'm very familiar with some of the people.
I, well, I guess I would suggest you certainly do that. And as Councilmember Melton, she covered a lot of bases as the chair of the Law Committee, does an excellent job. So I won't be redundant in what she said, other than, I really want to emphasize, and you can sit down, thanks. I really want to emphasize, when they changed that liquor license application, we're going through this, you're a business, you're in my district, you've had some trouble. I've actually went into your place several weeks ago just to get a look for myself. I know you've had your security people here, and I forget the big guy's name right here that was actually in our Law Committee, that I said at that time, you need to raise a pay for what he was going through up to that point in October, because there was a lot of problems. But when you guys put that on there, I was in Councilmember Melton's office, and I spoke to Councilmember Palermo. It, it really took me aback that we're working to try to get you guys back on your feet and try to move through this. And I'll let Mr. Weason speak more to it, and I'll comment more, but that, that really bothered me, seeing that on there. But I know you're withdrawing, and Councilmember Harding brought that up early. He beat us all to the punch, but that, that was concerning that that was in there. I'll say my remarks till later. Now, Mr. President, thanks.
Thank you. So Ms. Cunningham, we're at the point of the hearing where we would ask for the testimony of any additional folks that want to favor the license, but based on your initial remarks, would a show of hands suffice for this point of the hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just for the record, if you're in favor of this license, if you would, raise your hand for me, and I'll just note that for the record. Okay? I'll note, I see about three or four or five hands there. All right. Thank you. So then at this point, we'll call for those that are in opposition to the license. Anyone opposed to the license that wants to speak today? Okay. I'm not seeing anyone, so Ms. Cunningham, I presume you don't have any questions in that respect?
Only that I wanted to make the record clear, and I wasn't sure if I did, based upon the comment you made. I did withdraw that additional application. I know you had mentioned it, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Withdrawed the C?
The modification of, to add off sale.
Okay. Yeah. So you're in full agreement to not pursue the C, but have this be amended to an I, should that be the case today?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's appropriate, too. That's, after all, that's why we're here. And I believe your security officer, that much probably overwhelms her, but still, the reason why we're here is for the long-form discussion, because there has been concerns. Okay. So now we're to the point where I'll call on Sergeant Mraz. Is the sergeant available to represent the city? Please come down. The sergeant will give a presentation, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from Mr. Weason, or any questions from council members, and then we'll go back to the applicant.
Sergeant Mraz, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I have 11 exhibits of tavern reports over the last couple of years that were pulled from a larger group to be summoned here. Saturday, 27th of February of 2021, at 2:10 hours, I was in the area. There was a disturbance that was outside. There were several parties arguing inside the 415 when the disturbance happened. Two of the same parties were involved in an incident. Short, a short time later, it was 10 minutes later, we located two parties who were down on the south side of 13th and O'Harnie. They were, appeared to have been assaulted. One of the items taken from was a, was a cellphone. He had facial injuries and blood on both parties. The officers saw earlier in the night this gentleman coming out of the 415 bar when he was causing a disturbance there. The 415 bar to the, excuse me, he left to the south and then east prior to getting assaulted. The second incident, Sunday, 28th of February, 2021, at 00:22 hours, officers responded with the Omaha Police, Omaha Fire Department for an alcohol overdose. A patron was incapacitated, lying on the bench near the front door. They had pulled her from inside on the bathroom floor. She had shallow breathing, seemed, her pulse seemed to be faint, and she was transported to the hospital. Sunday, 13th of March, 2022, at 01:00 hours, we were dispatched to an assault report near the area. The person stated they were in the 415 bar. An unknown male yelled at him and then punched him in the face. He had visible injury, red marks swelling to his face around his left eye. 11th of April of 2022, at 00:54 hours, officers observed a disturbance at the 415 bar. They were fighting inside of the bar. I'm sorry, the party that was involved stated that he was fighting inside of the bar. They then ran toward each other and began to roll around on the ground, fighting when officers arrived, just as another disturbance was breaking out of that same location. And also, I should note, there were no arrests made at that time. The parties were pulled away by other friends, and they dispersed. On Sunday, the 22nd of April, 2022, at 2:11 hours, officers were outside of the 415 bar and observed several parties physically fighting. There were two females. The officers rushed over to assist 415 security in breaking it up. Both parties left the scene immediately, and no statement was given. Friday, the 3rd of June, 2022, at 01:53 hours, officers in the area heard a disturbance on the north side of Howard. They were directed to bar security, who had just thrown, who stated the individual involved threw a bottle at a parked vehicle in front of Eat the Worm, which is to the south. It broke the window of the business, and he stated that he had been at 415 South 13th Street earlier in the night and got into a disturbance with a party involved there. Friday, 11th of June, 2022, at 01:27 hours, officers observed a fight at the 415, at the 415 bar. They were actively punching each other outside. The immediate exit to the 415 bar on the sidewalk, security was seen, was on the scene. They could not gain control of the situation. They were fighting with each other in front of the security at that time. They were yelling and pushing their way through paid, other patrons who were on the patio while they're attempting to check IDs. Several other people were jumping the small gated area to get inside the security. However, they were distracted, and they were unable to stop them from jumping over and getting inside. We did book several parties for disorderly conduct. Some individuals who were involved stated the fight broke out inside the bar, and there only appeared to be one security guard on duty at that time, and he was unable to control what happened. 19th of June, 2022, 22:05 hours, officers on bike patrol detected a strong odor of burnt marijuana at the patio of the 415 establishment. A male party holding a lit marijuana joint was seated on the outside of the bench of the establishment. 24th of July, 2022, 02:20 hours, officers flagged down by a party who stated he was inside the 415 bar when his ex-girlfriend approached him inside the bar, began yelling at him, smacked him in the face two or three times, and then kicked him in the leg. She had an active protection order against her. Friday, 2nd of September, 2022, 02:14 hours, officers observed a minor female party walking down the street with an open container in her hand. She stated she was inside the 415 bar and consumed alcohol inside. She entered the 415 bar while no one was at the door. She states she knows somebody in security, and they allowed her in. She stated that she went up to the bar and, and got a drink. She was also cited for, for several offenses with that. And the last one, Sunday, 18th of September, 22, 01:54 hours, officers observed a disturbance coming out of the- officers observed a disturbance coming out of the bar. As the officers approached, the security officer, he told him that three men had just, he had just thrown out, were causing a disturbance and assaulted him. I don't have the name of the security guard in front of me at that time. Those are the 12 exhibits that I have. As far as the issues that we experienced down there, I've been down there for the last four years. Many times, it's hard to prove where the fights occurred, because as you literally step away from the property outside the gate, the outside gate of 415, you're automatically on somebody else's property. And I've instructed my officers not to do a tavern report if we can't tie it to the bar. Many times, people flee after they fight, and there's no way to prove where it happened, but we all know where it's probably coming from at that time. It's not much of a surprise, but we're short officers right now, and consistently dedicating all of our resources to this bar at bar close every single weekend. So those are some of the issues we're experiencing.
Great, thank you, Sergeant. You're here for questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll see if Mr. Weason has any questions.
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney, and I only have one question for Sergeant Mraz. And that is that Sergeant Mraz indicated that the department is consistently deploying most, if not all, of its resources downtown at bar closing every weekend to this establishment, the area around this establishment. And I would just like to confirm with Sergeant Mraz that that is still an ongoing problem, issue and problem, even though there have not been as many tavern reports over the past three or four months.
I left the Riverfront at shift change, which was the beginning of March, to go to an easier day shift position. So I can't testify the last several weeks. But in February, when I was there, I know that there were, there was a presence of us who was there.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of the Sergeant? Ms. Melton, I think your light's on.
Thank you, although I turned my light on before Sergeant Mraz gave his last testimony. Sergeant Mraz, could I ask you to come back up?
Yes.
You stated that you just switched in March of this year, '23?
Correct.
Okay. So between September of '22, that was the last tavern report that we discussed. I know Regina came on in October, I believe, so just after that, and we were in front of the Law Committee. They discussed changes that they were going to make. Since October until you left, you know, last month, have you noticed a change? Because you stated that you've been in this area for the last four years. What have you noted since, basically since October of '22?
It is, it is a dead time of the year, so it is going to be quieter regardless of any changes that may have, or may not have been made. So I couldn't testify that it's necessarily slowed down since that timeframe. But our presence is still there. We're still dedicating officers to that area to monitor the crowds at bar close.
Do you know how many officers are deployed on average on weekend nights down there before you left?
I would, I would send as many needed, but in general, I would send at least two just to monitor that bar. Many times, there would be quite a few more. You would have officers who show up to assist if there's an active fight or something to that nature. And again, I can't say that all of those fights were directly tied to the 415, because I don't know, you know, they were fighting in the street, and then they dispersed. So I can't say necessarily that they were in the bar, which is why a tavern report might not have been completed. However, it was at bar close in front of their establishment.
Now, do you have communicate, did you or anyone, any other officers, do you have frequent communication with bars where you are deploying officers regularly? So have you been in contact with their security?
I have, I've spoken with them and with their security as well.
Do you see a difference in the security that they have now versus what they had prior to October of '22?
I have not noticed anything different.
Okay. And you, so you still feel the need to deploy the officers down there at closing?
Absolutely.
Do you find that most of the disturbance occurs at closing?
That's probably a fair statement.
How many other bars are around there?
Dozens.
So when you're looking at the 415, are you, when you say you have officers down there, are you down there for the 415? Or are you in that area because of other bars as well?
That stretch specifically, we're there at approximately 2 o'clock, when we go to other locations that might, might have issues. And then at 2 o'clock, we circle back around, and we're monitoring their bar specifically because of the problems that occur when people leave the bar. And there aren't, I should say, there aren't any other bars directly on that block. It's, that's the only bar that is on that block, that stretch.
Okay, so when you're sitting out there, you're directed at kind of monitoring the 415?
Essentially, yes.
And that's based on kind of the history and the issues that are there?
Correct.
And I assume you're hoping to prevent issues by, with your presence?
Correct.
Do you think that your presence has prevented some?
Some.
Do you think that there's anything that the bar could do for further prevention?
I'm sure there's, there are things that can be done to help us out. So we, I think it's been discussed, possibly having off-duty officers, but it's not a, doesn't resolve all of the problems, but it does help.
Okay. And I, well, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave my other, maybe other comments and questions to Councilman Begley, if he has any more for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great questions, Chair Melton of the Law Committee. Sergeant, I do have a couple of follow-up questions. I want to be clear on the tavern reports that you read earlier. I wrote down September of '22. Was that the last tavern report for 415?
That is the last one that I have on me. I do not know if there were any after that.
Okay. And having dealt with you on the Law Committee over the past five years, even though you're not there now, I would certainly say you were the expert of the downtown scene.
Appreciate that.
I believe you did answer the question of dozens of bars in this area. So my question is, have you or the Omaha Police Department written other tavern reports in this area?
There have been.
And sitting in the Law Committee before the last tavern report, certainly there were numerous tavern reports. And so how this works is we, as the Law Committee, will bring the establishment in to have a discussion for recommendations, because again, we're just the recommending body. Whether we recommend approval of a liquor license or not, Lincoln, the Liquor Control Commission, has the ultimate say on if a liquor license will be approved or denied. But what we like to do for our businesses in Omaha, we like to help them out because of the employees that they employ. So with the notes I've taken, it appears the last tavern report was September of '22, in which time we brought in 415 roughly October to the Law Committee, and which I believe you were there. And what we did is we made recommendations. We said, hey, there's been some problems, but we want you here, and these are what we would recommend you doing. And the other thing that I took note of was that a couple of the security guards, or sorry, whatever the title is, not uniform police, came up, and they stated the dates that they started at the establishment, which is exactly what we asked of 415. You know, get some off-duty law enforcement officers in there if possible. Try to stay away from the T-shirt as much as possible. You know the events, the DJs, the crowd that that will bring, and the problems you will have. And that's what we discussed. The reason we're here today is because of all the prior problems. And now what we have in front of us is the long-form application. So to me, you came before us, and I'll defer to Councilmember Begley as well, because he gets all the complaints, not myself, not any other council member, although we may get some. I'll defer to him, but you came before us. We mentioned what we would recommend, because we're only a recommending body, even in the Law Department, to which could help us, meaning us, the Omaha Police Department, who we know are 100-plus officers short. We've told you numerous times, they can't be your private security guards. And my eye is with the lack of tavern reports that we've had since September. Even though I do believe that I've heard from the Clerk's Office that there has been one since then, and we're in April now, it's certainly not the string we had before. And I think that's because you, as owners, as owners of not just this establishment for a liquor license, but you have a couple others as well, you did exactly what we asked you to do. So I just, my main question, Sergeant, you answered, was, did you give other tavern reports to other establishments in the downtown area in the urban core? And you said yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Sergeant, if you could take a look, I wrote down several of those incidents. Can you count for me, and then I'll ask Ms. Cunningham a question, on how many of those tavern reports were issued after 1:00 AM? If you could take a quick peek and give me a count?
I have them sitting over here.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem. And Ms. Cunningham, in the meantime, would you mind coming up?
I think Mr. Begley's
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just questions for the Sergeant.
Understood, yep, sorry. Take your time, Sergeant.
You said after 1 o'clock?
1:00 AM, yes, sir.
Seven of these.
Seven out of 12?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Plermo mentioned the last tavern report, I believe, if I wrote it down right, was 9:18 to 22, is that correct?
That's what I have, too.
Okay. So are you still having your officers were 100-plus short, if I heard you correctly, that are still parking outside there at closing time?
Regularly.
Okay. And do you do that at
Friday and Saturday nights.
Yeah, on the weekends, sure. Do you do that any else, any other location downtown typically in the Old Market?
There's a general presence, I like them to be where the majority of the people are around. So I'll put them in certain areas where I see most of the foot traffic, and this is obviously one of those spots.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, Mr. President, I'll say my questions for Ms. Cunningham when we get there, so thanks, Sergeant. And thank your officers for all the work they do. That's a tough job down in that Old Market, especially everywhere it is in the city. But the men and women in the Omaha Police Department down there, it's a thankless job, but I'm sure everybody in the council would say the same thing. Thank you for what you do down there.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Note for the lights for the Sergeant. At this time, we'll ask the applicant if they'd like to cross-examine any of the persons who testified in opposition. You didn't have any opposing testimony, but for the Sergeant. Ms. Cunningham, is there anything you'd like to address in that respect? And you will have, next have an opportunity to rebut anything you heard, if you want to take that opportunity.
That's what I was going to say. I don't have any particular need except for the problems within the incident reports, which he would not be able to address.
Okay. So we'll skip the cross-examination then, or move on from the cross-examination. Is there anything you'd like to rebut, Ms. Cunningham or the applicant, in terms of the evidence presented?
Excuse me, I was just made aware of something by Mr. McCoy, who is one of the other security people. He just wanted to add that he does not recall meeting Officer Mraz, or Sergeant Mraz, I'm sorry. Is it time for rebuttal?
Yes.
Let's talk about incident reports and what they don't contain. One of the things they don't talk about, and we're not trying to really gripe about, but you need to understand what that area is like. You have the 415, you have two food trucks, you have Eat the Worm, you have Parliament, you have the Throwback Lounge. And it's all moving all the time, and it's all moving late. Those trucks are open until 2:30. We have no right to clear an area out there, nor are we saying that they're the cause of the problem. Humans are always the cause of the problem, particularly humans who have been drinking. But if you take a look at the incident reports, February in 2021, we have someone who apparently drank too much, had to seek medical help, but what that report doesn't say is where was she? We don't know where she started that. We're blaming the 415 for that, and maybe they share some blame. We just don't know because it's not there, and that's probably because of the need of taking care of the situation. I bring that up because it's two years ago. The next one involves a dispute basically outside the bar again, and that is two years ago, February 27, 2021. Some of these people were cited by Omaha Police. And what I'm pointing out is as bad as some of these facts look in incident reports, when they go through the criminal justice process, we're seeing $25 fines, $50 fines. I'm not saying fines are inappropriate for the charges that they have, but when you look at what penalties we're seeking for behavior that took place outside, it doesn't seem to be on a balance. The June 3, 22 is important because this was the case that took place at a different bar. The people in talking said, well, we had been at 415 in the evening, but the entire incident took place at Eat the Worm. But the incident report is ours. Those people received disorderly conduct charges and fines. I don't know what Eat the Worm did about their window. The next report was June 3. All of the people named in that got banned in bar by 415. And I just, I had just checked some of these against the justice website, so that I could kind of track what was going on here. There was a mention about a January incident report just now. That was not presented to the council, because I believe that it just involved an individual who was having some type of an event in his life. The 415 followed this person, kept him inside, kept him safe, kept other people safe until the police could respond. One of these reports is based upon a domestic violence case, in which someone goes in, and I don't care who's saying what to whom, but it did result in domestic violence actions against, I think, both sides, because it was started in Iowa and then traveled over here. But it didn't take much to stop it, because I think the male party was the complainant, and then it went into some big deal in court. But the bar handled it. A lot of these are questions when security is moving people out. When they move people out, they disperse or they don't. If they fan out to the food court, I don't think we can do anything about that. When people try and get back in, we do not let them back in. There is a question about that incident report, June 19. This person was found after hours, apparently smoking something outside the bar, and said he was waiting for an Uber. It is not clear at all that he was even in the 415, because the bar was closed when they came through. He was just sitting on a bench, but that's an incident report. Not saying that everybody's perfect. I have never said that, but there are some things, when you add the cumulative effect, it just looks like a little more than perhaps maybe what it ought to be. One of the incident reports is about a young woman who was accosted by somebody else for wearing inappropriate clothes, not at the bar. With regard to this, I mean, I think I've made my point clear about the incident reports. I think the police are coming into a circumstance that's sort of like either in the process of trying to be resolved or being resolved. It's hard, they write the citations they can. I'm just trying to provide some perspective from the bar owner's part, because we all know it's hard to own a bar, and people do occasionally misbehave. And we are anticipating a big increase in numbers, potentially, although a big increase in numbers, potentially, although it's kind of weird, the 415 doesn't really get traffic until after 11:00 at night. It's pretty dead before that, but after 11, particularly on the weekends, it's going to get busy, and I can only assume that additional security is going to have to be put on as the weather starts turning more into a stable spring. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wesson, do you have any follow-up questions?
Nothing from Mr. Wesson. Councilmembers, any follow-up questions at this point? Ms. Melton, you're recognized. For your knowledge, too, councilmembers, you may ask questions of the rebuttal there, and then I will close public hearing. There is still time for discussion after that, if you wish to have your lights for that point in the meeting, too.
Please come up, Ms. Cunningham.
I just asked him, I said, I couldn't hear anything.
Sorry, can you hear me okay now?
Oh.
Okay. One of the things I would like to ask you, the sergeant mentioned that he has officers parked outside with anticipation of problems at closing time of 2:00 AM. We're 100, I don't know what the number is now, 100-plus officers short.
Right.
The Old Market is a great community. We have the new park downtown. We got the Luminarium, we got the Steel House. It's blossoming, and we're having challenges with the 415, and my question for you is, if I were going to support this today, would you consider a stipulation that I would ask is to close the establishment at 1:00 AM?
So they're down to basically two hours of operational time? Is that what you mean?
To close at 1:00 AM.
Okay. I'd need to talk to my clients.
Okay.
I'm not prepared to make that stipulation.
We got time.
Yeah, well, I would not want to do it right here. Can I address your concern?
Please.
I understand what you're driving at, which is if we close at 1:00, then this makes it all the better, but does it? We already cleared this bar at 1:45 and stopped serving, so we're almost within that range, but those businesses around us are not closed, nor can we impact them. Now, if the question were, do you want more security outside, I would tell you that's going to happen anyway. With regard to where the officers are, I believe they're there because it gives them maximum overview of all of those bars, more or less, in that area. It's like years ago, they always used to sit on the corner of Howard Street. Why? Because they had the maximum viewing. Nobody debated that, and no one thought that we were being inappropriate with our officer usage. It was a great vantage point for them, and I think when they see something going on out on that street, they're going to run over. I'm not here to say that police officers' time isn't valuable because it clearly is, but when you have that many licenses and bars emptying out at the same time, restaurants still open, food trucks still open, you're going to have some interaction. We've tried very hard, and I think it speaks to not having an incident report since September. We hired all the security in October, so...
And thank you for your answer.
Mm-hmm, I'm sorry.
A couple things, as the sergeant mentioned, and we're all aware of, is in the winter months, things slow down a little bit, right?
Mm-hmm.
So last Sunday, it was 75 degrees, beautiful day. It's April the 4th now. We're getting into spring and summer, so, you know, I get the crystal ball out and I look to see if these problems are going to start happening again. And so you talk about security outside without rehashing all the times that we went through in our Law Committee back in October. What are you prepared to do? I mean, are you going to hire more? Is that what I heard you say?
We go back...
Because if I can finish, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
What I don't want to have, if this moves forward today, is the Omaha Police being your supplemental security. That's a real, real problem for security in the Old Market, in the city for that matter. When we're tying up resources down because we know when people are rolling out of the 415 at closing time, at 2:00 AM or 1:45 or whatever it is, that we can expect problems. Are you going to hire more security to address that so we don't have to have the sergeant having his officers tied up, sitting outside? And I, I don't want to talk about the other establishments in the Old Market. We're here to talk about the 415.
Right.
So that's one of the concerns I still got. I don't like tying up our officers because we know there's going to be problems at the 415.
So with regard to increasing the number of security, that's already on deck. The company that we have has other people that they can move in, okay? It's not that we don't have other security. If you'll recall, when we initially started this process in October, it was still a really, really busy bar season. We utilized two people outside, one inside, plus, in the case of most nights, Mr. McCoy, who was also present. That started curtailing everything right away because if you have two, you've got one on the door and one outside, sort of with the long view, and that's what we did, and that's what we have to go back to. We haven't seen a real increase yet, but I have no doubt that it's going to occur sometime this month. That just makes sense to me.
Maybe this weekend, I'm sure, sooner.
Yeah.
I'll yield, Mr. President. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Cunningham, obviously, I'm very sensitive to being put on the spot in court and asking you what your clients want to do when they're sitting right behind you and you have, you know, in this particular case, there's 50 people staring at you. I have a question for the clerk for something that I would do after we closed because I'm mindful of procedure. But is there, is there any problem with laying this over for a week to potentially give Ms. Cunningham time, talk to her clients, talk about the things that Councilman Bagley has talked about, and then obviously, once it's closed, potentially, councilmembers then could reserve their statements and reasons for their vote for next week? Well, actually, it would be, I'm sorry, it would be two weeks.
And we don't have enough time. Recommendation is due back to the Liquor Control Commission on April 17.
Then I guess what I would say, Ms. Cunningham, we have to close it, but I guess what I think should happen, we've got a lot of other issues here on the agenda.
I know.
So I guess what I would like to know, ask the clerk, is this something that we could hold over to give Ms. Cunningham time to go speak with her clients while we then take up the rest of the agenda? After, after the Mr. President closes the hearing? Could we delay the vote?
Yeah, you can. Yep.
Okay. That, that was my question. I, I don't think it's appropriate, and I understand the position Ms. Cunningham is in, so if we could maybe give her some time, that would be what I would suggest, and then we could take up our vote, and the councilmembers could make comments and questions at that time.
I would suggest tabling it till later in the meeting, maybe after a certain item or...
Okay, and I think in order to make that motion, I have to allow President Festerson to close the public hearing before I can make that motion. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that'd be best. So I don't see any further questions of, given the rebuttal, and we will close the public hearing. Should the council wish to desire what Ms. Melton is describing, and I think that might be wise, I would suggest we move this item to after number 48 in respect to others that are here to address that issue before the rest of the public hearing on the items, which are number 49 through 64.
That's exactly what I was suggesting. If we could delay this until after 48, we'll bring you up before 49.
Because of conflicts in my calendar, I was wondering if we could just hold the record open and I could submit something in writing tomorrow morning?
We can't.
I just didn't know if you could.
Unfortunately, unlike the court system, we're only able to vote during our open meetings, so we wouldn't be able to render an opinion later. So it appears because we don't have counsel on Tuesday, procedurally, we're not able to do that.
Would it be appropriate for me to advise the city attorney of our intent?
The only way we can do this is we have to vote on it, and unfortunately, the vote has to occur today.
No, I, that's what I mean. If I have to leave and you haven't been able, would I be able to? No, because he's leaving.
I think somebody, the applicant would have to still be here.
Okay, and that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Okay.
So is that a motion, Ms. Melton?
That is a motion to delay the vote till after Agenda Item 48, to recall this, I guess, delay and recall this.
Motion in a second to table the item until after number 48, at which time we'll take the item back up and have further conversation with the applicant even though the public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on Agenda Items Number 13 through 16 were held on March 28. I don't see any further lights.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 17 through 46 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Louisiana 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm supporting Agenda 30 for traffic calming, and then the library items, and Items 43, 44, 45, and 46. I am supporting Item 44 because I, I believe that, that the elections here in Nebraska are open and fair. The Secretary of State was before, the Nebraska State was before the US Senate, like a week ago, and if he thinks Nebraska elections are fair, that includes Douglas County, and so he does a good job. This, earlier this morning, he explained what transpired the last three years.
So, Lee, which item is this your address?
Oh, that, that's 44, but I do support 43, 44, 45, 46. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? This is 17 through 46. Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 47, a resolution to approve the nomination of Patricia "Big Mama" Barron Street as a commemorative street name on Patrick Avenue from 30th Street to 31st Street.
The public hearing and vote on number 47 is today. I noticed that Ms. Harrison was not able to stay with us, and she may have had to leave with her son, who was doing really well there and being patient with us, but I'll call to see if there's any other proponents here today on number 47. Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearings closed. I'll just say that I think the street name is very, very well worth it and very well intentioned, and I think recognizes a person that was instrumental in North Omaha, that Ms. Johnson might want to acknowledge as well, and as Mr. Palermo acknowledged, does have the best catfish in town.
You don't.
Ms. Johnson, any remarks?
Oh, I second that.
Great, thank you. And is that a motion?
Motion to a third.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley. Oh, Bagley stepped out. Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 48, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement for the design phase engineering services on the Farnham Street two-way conversion project is communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 48 is today. We'll start with proponents and a brief presentation on the item from Public Works.
Jeffrey Swelman, city traffic engineer representing Public Works, 1819 Farnham. Farnham Street from Happy Hollow to 46th Street is classified as a arterial corridor, which is a higher functioning class for a priority for movement of traffic. There are a few of those across the city of Omaha that go through neighborhoods, and that's what we have in this situation here from Happy Hollow to 46th. It has a unique lane configuration, traffic operation, as everybody is aware, for two hours in the morning. There is no westbound traffic, and two lanes are open for eastbound, and then in the afternoon, it prohibits eastbound traffic, and two lanes are open for westbound. It's been that way for a very long time, I believe, over 60 years, and discussions about converting it to something more traditional have probably existed during that entire time. The most recent look at this came from, you know, the, a Farnham project was put onto the capital improvement program, and in 2021, we organized a traffic study to be done that also was a concept study for some of the major intersections along this corridor. That's 50th and 52nd. Both of those streets carry, they're side streets compared, minor streets compared to Farnham, but they both carry a significant amount of traffic. About 35% to 45% of the total traffic going through those intersections come from the side street. So in traffic engineering terms, we consider these intersections pretty close to balanced. You don't have situations where you get 50/50. That just doesn't happen very often. 72nd and Dodge, maybe, off the top of my head, is one of the most balanced, but 72nd only carries 43%. At 90th and Dodge, 90th only carries 33%. So I believe that kind of shows how 50th and 52nd adds a complexity to this arterial because of these intersections carrying, these side street intersections carrying a lot of traffic. So in 2021, the study in concept began. We brought in a consultant, FHU, and Mark Misinger will be here to talk about their involvement. We did an intersection control evaluation. We looked at multiple different types of traffic control, signalized, and roundabout. These concepts, or, yeah, concepts, were brought forth to the public in April of 2022, and we presented all concepts and noted that the roundabouts were the safer option. The feedback we got through that public outreach was concerns for safety. August 1 of 2022, the study was finalized, and a recommendation for roundabouts was part of that final, final study, and that is when we informed the city council members and updated the project website, and I believe a press release was issued as well. Today, we are here to ask for approval of a final design contract for the preferred concept of roundabouts at 50th and 52nd. Doing so would allow the unique operations of Farnham Street to be converted to two-way all the time. We believe the safety improvements would allow for that change to happen. Roundabouts are safer, they're cost-effective, and they slow traffic. National data supports this, as does our local data. We've been sharing information and having discussions with all of you through this process and keeping you informed about roundabouts. You'll hear more talking points on roundabouts from other proponents, and here today, you will hear that, but you also might have heard from others that have contacted you. Public Works does plan to utilize roundabouts more often. There are 23 existing roundabouts today in the city. There are five under contract for construction, three on 108th and two on 48th. There are five... There are five up for design contracts, two of which are for today, one of which is at Elmwood Road and Underwood, Thirty-third and Hamilton, and I'm forgetting what the other one is, but we are moving forward with, in our recent past, currently with our construction contracts and going into design. We're looking at more and more roundabouts. Vision Zero, another talking point, will lead to even more emphasis on the tool. We consider roundabouts a very effective tool for both operations and safety. And so coming out of those efforts, I believe roundabouts will be a major talking point. I guess I'll finish up by just saying that I am here and available for any questions as they come up through the hearing.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and we appreciate everyone who stayed and had patience with us here to testify on this item. I think that's just about everybody else in the room. So we did go to the extent of having folks sign in so we know how many testifiers are here and who intends to speak. I have about three proponents that have signed in to speak, and so now we'll start with proponents and encourage folks to keep their testimony, you know, to three, four, or five minutes if possible. And that first testifier is Timothy Adams in support. Here he comes.
Timothy Adams with WSP at twenty-nine sixty-one Martha Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, members of the council, for letting me speak today. I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of Nebraska and also a roadway safety professional. I'm with the WSP team, an engineering design consultant firm, and we're leading the Vision Zero action plan. I'd like to talk about the benefits of roundabouts and achieving Vision Zero, the achieving zero traffic deaths in Omaha. Roundabouts are the single most, the single best tool we know of today to eliminate traffic deaths. They have a ninety percent to a hundred percent reduction in fatalities and an eighty percent reduction in injury crashes. Considering the pedestrian safety at roundabouts, according to NHTSA federal highway data, there's been only five pedestrian deaths in the entire country in the last fifteen years. In that same time, eighty-nine thousand people on bikes and pedestrians have died, but only five at roundabouts. No one in that same time period has been killed in Nebraska at roundabouts, driver, bicyclist, or pedestrian. Roundabouts remain the safest form of intersection traffic control we know of today, and they are essential part of us achieving Vision Zero. That's all I had, but happy to answer other questions.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
The next testifier in support is Lawrence Etienne.
I'm here as a resident whose house is on Farnham Street. I'm at one-two-two South Fifty-first Street, unlike Mr. Mancuso's at one-two-two South Fifty-first Ave. Yesterday, I had the great, well, sad pleasure of standing outside and then hearing a big thud. I, excuse me, that was Sunday afternoon, when a car ran a red light on Fiftieth Street and rammed into another, which resulted in a couple of people going to the hospital. This is a very common occurrence at these intersections. Part of the problem is people don't observe red lights in our city. But the biggest problem is, is this is a neighborhood and it, where our houses are but to the street. It's not a thoroughfare. So I, I support roundabouts just for slowing down the traffic as they exit, whether it be the downtown area or the med center. We do have two thoroughfares, Dodge Street and Leavenworth, which will help flow people who want to get out of town faster or back to the suburbs. So that's, I'm here for that. It's for safety only. I'm strictly an individual that lives right on the corner of Farnham Street. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The next proponent is Mark Meisinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, City Council. Mark Meisinger, Felsberg Holton Olbig, one-four-two-two Murka Hills Drive, number one-fifteen here in Omaha, Nebraska. Again, as, as Mr. Rieselman mentioned, the city hired Felsberg Holton Olbig to do the corridor study for Farnham Street in twenty-twenty-one. I was part of that project. Just wanted to, to make myself available to answer questions. And note that we have, you know, received and reviewed the letter in opposition that was part of the agenda, provided some responses to Omaha Public Works, and we did have the opportunity to meet with the various City Council people, so thank you for that. Again, if, if there's any questions, we're available to answer those.
Great, thank you. That's all of the testifiers that have signed in. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor? I recognize this gentleman.
Mr. President, members of the council, I did not sign in. Thank you for the opportunity. Todd Fitzher, Douglas County Engineers Office, one-five-five-zero-five West Maple Road. You do recognize me from being your city engineer for twelve years until recently. And I did want to come up today and speak to you on behalf of this project, give you a little bit of history about a similar project, but I'll start with safety. I echo what you've heard today. Roundabouts are incredibly safe feature, both for pedestrians and vehicular traffic. There's all the data you want to find to support that. I know you've seen a lot of that. I want to talk to you a little bit about a, a past project that we did, and that's at Forty-second Q. It was the first time ever in the city of Omaha that we did roundabout on an ar, two arterial streets. It was about ten years ago that it opened. It was highly, extremely controversial. We did news stories. We had people fighting against that all the way up to the federal highway government level. It indeed was a federal highway project, and by the time we presented the final concepts to the public, we were years into this process, and it, it did slow down the process. But the federal highway department makes you jump through every hoop, cross every T and dot every I. And so they were fully supportive by the time we reached that point. And we presented the data of how the fatalities were happening at that intersection, what the proposed design speeds were and how this was going to work. And the reason I wanted to share this with you today is that's been in there for about ten years. There's two schools immediately south on Q Street. One's a grade school and one's a middle school. And then there's Hitchcock Community Center just to the north. Those draw from each other with young people, with families, with things like that. Hitchcock has a pool, an ice rink, a community center, all of those things, and you've got these neighborhoods with these two schools. To my knowledge, in the ten years since this opened, we've not had a pedestrian injured at that intersection. My favorite comment after that opened was when somebody called me and says, "It appears to be confusing as people are slowing down as they drive through it." And that was the exact intent, and that's why it's there today. So I wanted to share that with you. And then the last thing I do want to talk about a little bit, and, and somebody touched on it earlier. We did hear at the public meeting for this project, several neighbors say, "We wish we could just have this be a neighborhood street. We wish we could reduce the traffic through our neighborhood." This is the only option that's going to do that. Our studies showed that this option is not going to pump as many cars per hour through these intersections as signalized intersections will. In other words, it's going to introduce some slowdown and some delay of that through traffic. So if you're just in a hurry to get through this area, to get from Farnham to Dodge on your way to or from work, you're more likely to divert to Leavenworth or Dodge Street because these roundabouts are going to slow that throughput down. So I realize you have a very important decision in front of you today. Very much appreciate this opportunity to speak and to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more proponent signed in, Michael Tomorello.
Oh, hi. My name is Michael Tomorello. I'm at three-oh-seven South Fiftieth Avenue, six-eight-one-three-two. I have just recently moved into this house about a year ago. So far, I've seen three accidents, two at Fiftieth, one at Fifty-second this past Sunday. You know, I'm just here to show support for the proposed roundabouts. The roundabouts will reduce overall traffic flow through the Happy Hollow to Saddle Creek, you know, corridor there. The proposed roundabouts will reduce the flow of traffic, create a more of a neighborhood road, which is what we all want in the area. We want to make it more into a neighborhood road and less of a cut-through road being used for rush hour traffic, especially with the building of the UNMC on Saddle Creek. So recently, an article just came out yesterday from Mode Shift. They're citing that zero incidents of injury fatality for pedestrians and bikes at the twenty-three roundabouts across the city. This is no doubt due to the lower rates of speed and increased driver awareness compared to Sunday's crash, which is a red light runner who T-boned a vehicle. I want to highlight that the DMPA doesn't speak for the entirety of the neighborhood. They have been the most vocal in opposition for the roundabouts, but they do not represent the entire neighborhood. The opposition has come up with the idea that somehow two-way all day with only lights and pedestrian crosswalks is going to be safer overall for pedestrians. In the proposal, there is no removal of the safety crosswalk at Fifty-first Street, and we should also be proposing safer alternatives for people to cross the street. You know, hand signals and lights and roundabouts are not mutually exclusive. So you could implement a crosswalk for students as well during those times. Sorry, I just rushed here from work, so I think that's pretty much all I have to say here. Just want to show some support for people who do live in the neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making it. Are there any other proponents in the audience that want to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to opponents. I have about fifteen or twenty signed in here at the moment, and we'll start with Peter Manhart, who happens to be right in the front row.
Thanks. Peter Manhart, three-one-two South Fifty-seventh Street. I'd like to submit into record my comments, and then I sent both, I don't know, do I give them to you?
Sure.
I also emailed the letter from Dundee Memorial Park to both Dan and Pete to be submitted into the record. I, I forgot to bring it, but it's in both of your emails. So I'm better off the cuff, but I don't want to miss anything, so I'll run through this. I'm a lifelong resident of Dundee. I have lived in a few houses from Farnham near my, nearly my whole life. My mom lives three houses from Fifty-second and Farnham and has since nineteen sixty-seven. I am a past president and current board member of Dundee Memorial Park, and I have been for seventeen years. Dundee Memorial Park recently sent you letters, as I mentioned, about the idea of the concerns we have for the roundabouts. The board is unanimously against the roundabouts. We don't speak for everyone. As Michael said, a new resident, I talked with Michael, seems like a great guy. We obviously don't speak for everyone, but in a situation when you have more than fifteen board members and they're all unanimous, you know, we have to show this is the side of the support we are showing. Just want to give you a little concern. Nobody in this room knew about the rant, or nobody on this side of the room, knew about the roundabouts. I went to a wedding on July sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two. I, I just don't know where I got those dates. I went to a wedding on July sixteenth, night, twenty-twenty-two, and I was sitting with somebody at a table, a nice gentleman, and he said, mentioned, "Oh, you're from Dundee." I said, "Yes." He said, "Oh, you, aren't you guys excited about the roundabouts we're putting in?" I said, "Roundabouts plural. The only roundabout I know of is the one at Forty-sixth and Farnham that the med center, the steel mill, steel mill project is putting in. What do you mean roundabouts?" "Well, the ones on Fiftieth and Fifty-second that the whole neighborhood loves." I, I entered, I said, "Well, I, you know, you say the whole number, neighborhood, uh, I've been on the board for seventeen years, and I have no idea what you're talking about." So I immediately took it back to the board and said, "There's this gentleman in this engineering company out west in, out in Fremont." And I explained, he said something about roundabouts at Fiftieth and Fifty-second, and of course, all fifteen of us had absolutely no idea this was going on. About thirteen days later, we received a postcard in the mail on the July twenty-sixth from the traffic from the city, saying that they want our feedback at UNO on the twenty-ninth, just a couple of days later. And if any, if we could, and they also mentioned that they're going to have a stakeholders meeting, and you'll hear from some stakeholders that live right on Farnham. But they said, "Yeah, please come give us feedback on this." It's funny that they asked for feedback, and I had already heard from the roundabouts from a gentleman on an engineering company that had already done all of the work and told me it was a quote done deal, and we've heard that before in Dundee. So to be clear, I don't, I, I want everybody in this room and on the council to understand that Dundee and myself do not hate roundabouts. You noticed how everybody who spoke as a proponent talked about roundabouts. They didn't talk about these roundabouts, and these are the roundabouts that we care about. There are two roundabouts and have been in Dundee since, for decades. And those roundabouts are at Elmwood Park Entrance, which is an irregular, if you know Elmwood Park Entrance, it's an irregular intersection where streets meet at different directions. They are not a, a four-way stop. The other one is at the Peanut and Country Club, and that again is multiple, multiple streets coming together in, in a, in a regular, and that necessitates a roundabout. You couldn't do it any other way. You couldn't put a, you couldn't put a sign in either one of those locations, and that's why they've been there for fifty years. The current roundabouts are in the middle of a residential neighborhood and two on a grade school route, the propose, that, that they're proposing. The, the, Dan Bagley, who we like more after today, our new city councilman came and Pete Fest, and Councilman Preston Festerson came to our roundabouts meeting at Brownell, and Dan was a new, is a new councilman and was surprised to hear that these were on the grade school route. And I would guess that all of you are surprised. I would guess that the consultants are surprised. I would guess that the traffic engineer is surprised. And I would guess most of the public that doesn't live right there would be surprised that these are on three. I would say at least two, Dundee and St. Margaret Murray's for sure, and then maybe Brownell Talbot for, for grade school, grade schools. So just imagine your third grader is navigating a roundabout. This, this third grader may, and I don't know how they're going to be set up, but may have to cross one lane of traffic and wait, and then cross the other lane of traffic. And I just want to remind you that children do not have airbags. I hate the crashes as much as anybody, but the horrific one that was Sunday, that was the first one since the two, two lights turned red, both people walked away without scratch. Okay, so I, I hate them as much as you, I, I, I hate accidents as much as you do, but an accident is quite different than a child dying. The reason why we have that wonderful green bridge was because in nineteen fifty-eight, a child crossing Dodge was hit and died, and they put up a bridge that we all know and love at Memorial Park. One kid was hit, and that bridge goes up and has been wonderful. So that's how much injury or a, God forbid, a death could affect this. Fiftieth and Fifty-second.
Peter, I'm going to have you wrap up pretty soon so we can get to everybody.
Then let me skip ahead. What, what I'll say is, the paper came out yesterday, and the paper said that over fifty percent, and remember in two thousand thirteen, when there was traffic problems in two thousand, oh, sorry, two thousand seventeen, there were red light running problems. You know what that was? It was thirteen percent, and Cody, the, the traffic engineer at the time, said that thirteen percent was unreasonable. We need it in single digits. We need, the amount of accidents caused by red light runners at intersections in this city needs to be below thirteen percent to single digits. The traffic, the World Herald said yet, said yesterday that more than fifty percent was red light runners. That's, when I read that, I was up all night last night saying, "What? That's why they're putting in roundabouts?" There has been absolutely nothing to do, nothing, they've done nothing with traffic calming. They've done nothing with a flashing light saying, "Be ready to stop if the light is flashing." I mean, what else? They've no, they've, they've done nothing. Drive it today, leave, leave Saddle Creek, drive to Fiftieth, and see if you hit what's called a dilemma zone. That zone that we all hit where we say, "Oh, shoot, we either have to run this light or we have to stop and get rear-ended." Which, and they choose run the light. That's called a dilemma zone. See how many dilemma zones there are. Have we even looked at the timing, the lights? Have we ever, have we made any other considerations on those lights before spending three million dollars on a roundabout that the vast majority of this neighborhood, and you're about to find out, doesn't want? Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll make sure to have your full remarks in the, in the
Yep.
Record too.
Thank you.
Okay, next opponent is Mary McHale. After Mary, we'll have Kim Shaney filled if she wants to come down.
Thank you, Mr. President and City Council leaders. Peter talked about the children who are going to school. I'm going to talk about the people that many people don't talk about, those that have mobility issues.
And Mary, I have your information here, but can you repeat, repeat your name and address for the record?
Sure. Mary McHale, M.C., capital H-A-L-E, five-zero-zero-nine Izzard Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-two. I'm going to talk about the people who have mobility. I'm going to talk about the people who have mobility issues. Who has gone through the roundabout in Elmwood with a person who uses a wheelchair?
I'm going to have you address the council.
Horrible. Hor, anybody? Who's gone through that roundabout when you've had a child in a stroller? Anybody on the council? That traffic doesn't wait for you. So when Peter talks about how her kid's going to get to school, how are people with disabilities going to be able to use that roundabout? Any of those roundabouts? The answer is they won't. And then let's, let's put it to the general population. How about people who have their kids in their strollers and they're going over to Lola's to eat, they want to go to the, walk to the library? How are they going to get through that roundabout? And maybe they've got two strollers because they have four kids, double, you know, twins. Who's going to stay behind because you can't get two of them in one of those lanes where you have to wait? That doesn't happen. And so when you say they're for everybody, they aren't for everybody. When you take a poll of people, have 10 people in a room, you ask them if you have a family member with a disability, one out of those 10 people are going to raise their hands. These roundabouts don't work for people who use wheelchairs, who may be on crutches even temporarily to try and go someplace, who have braces on their legs, who can't be trusted to cross the street by themselves. You think there are, you know, accidents now, there will be more accidents as families try to have their normal, their typical neighborhood experience, and they can't because they're road blocked at 50th and Farnham and 52nd and Farnham. And then they've got to hope that people watch the crossing light at 51st and Farnham so they can get across the street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Kim, after Kim is Glenda Lanahaw.
Hello, my name is Kim Shaneyfield, and my address is 305 South 52nd Street. Thank you for letting us be here today and to speak with you. Thank you for your time and your service as well. My three main points are safety and cost, and that the roundabouts are not a good fit for a historic neighborhood. Safety, pedestrians, children walk our neighborhood all the time, and I have lived there for 26 years, and I have seen a lot of people out walking, I've seen a lot of accidents. I don't think that you want children walking to Dundee Elementary, St. Margaret Mary, and Brownell Talbot navigating these roundabouts. Number two, it's expensive. There are other ways to solve this problem. We haven't seen flashing lights with warning signs to the, to the intersection. Once you use taxpayers' money to implement a roundabout, $3 million or $2 million or whatever the, the amount is, you're not going to take it out if it's not a good fit. So we're asking you, we've been in this neighborhood for a long time, and we know it's been a problem. We've asked for solutions, but we have never asked for a roundabout. And last of all, we don't have a lot of land, it's not a good fit for a historic neighborhood. If you want to build a roundabout, go ahead and build them, and all the places that have so much more land than we do, we don't even have parking in our street, and I can attest to that. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Glenda, and then we have Martin Richards.
First of all, I do want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity and for you to listen to how what our feelings are about the roundabouts. I happen to, my name is Glenda Lanahaw Rosenthal. I reside at 540 South 52nd Street in Omaha. I have lived on 52nd Street for approximately 30 years. We raised a family there. I can tell you, in all these years, hardly a day has gone by that I haven't seen emergency vehicles, whether it is ambulance, fire, rescue squads, police, coming down 52nd Street. The one thing I can tell you is, I would bet 90% of the time, they're coming from the south and coming north. There's a lot of traffic on Farnham, there's a lot of traffic on Dodge, there's, there's much more traffic there, and they must be coming from Leavenworth Street heading up 52nd Street. There isn't any way they can go on Happy Hollow because there's a roundabout, they're losing too much time. There's only two other roads between Saddle Creek and Happy Hollow, and that would be 50th and 52nd for emergency to use. If you are going to clog those up with a roundabout, how are emergency vehicles going to get to where they need to be? For this reason, I think this is a wrong decision to put two roundabouts on the only two clear ways to get through to Dodge Street from Leavenworth. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next is Martin, and then we have Lisa Schneider after that.
I have lived at 505 South 55th Street for 50 years, and I will say that I'm interested in, I'm interested in the, the history of Dundee and the remaining ground that we have. I don't want to be destroyed by roundabouts. And any roundabout that is considered, I, I, I'd rather have roundabouts in, in pre-planned areas rather than roundabouts carved up in, in, in 50th Street and 52nd Street. We have beautiful trees, and I don't think that we need to disrupt them and be economical, not to put the roundabouts in, but to put in flashing lights or just slow down the traffic. We don't need a confusing time of going east for two hours and then going west for two hours later on in the day. That's confusing. That there, I have seen many accidents, and I myself have been involved with being confused by what time is it and what. So I am really adamant about the two-way traffic and the roundabouts. I, I don't like the roundabout down on 60th and the park. That's, and I, I think that to remain, the, the south, north-south emergency would, would the roundabout slow down the emergency vehicles en route to the north-south areas. I, I just, I'd rather not go into anymore. I'd like to have everybody look at the roundabouts again and, and just give us some serious thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Lisa is next, and then we have Larry Store.
Hi, I'm Lisa Schneider. I live on the southwest corner of 50th and Farnham. Not only am I a stakeholder, I oppose the roundabouts for the reasons that. I see so many pedestrians every day using my sidewalk to cross from Farnham to go to Dodge Street, and all ages, from mothers walk, walking their young children to senior citizens, to myself mailing a letter at what used to be Chris's Drug Store. The list just goes on and on. Dog walkers. We're one of the last pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods in Omaha. We were built, Dundee was built for pedestrians. Roundabouts are fine, like Peter Manhart said, in the right location, maybe in a newer location where the roundabouts were built first, and then you built residential houses around the roundabouts. But our neighborhood, 100-year-old historic neighborhood, just isn't geared for roundabouts. My other main concern is, I also see emergent, emergency vehicles coming by every day, and they have to go from Leavenworth to Dodge. There's just, and I'm not an engineer, but I cannot see how it's even feasibly possible for these monster fire trucks to get, navigate through these. It's just baffles me. And one other quick thing, if I may please, say is, in Nebraska winters, how in the world are snowplows going to navigate through the roundabouts? They have enough trouble. I mean, it just totally baffles me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next testifier is Larry, and after Larry, we have Rick Ellis.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I don't like that word stakeholder, but I am a stakeholder in the North 50th Street, and there is a peanut roundabout not too far from me. The streets, the way they're organized, they're quite similar to what we're talking about on Farnham. You have different directions. However, like on Country Club going south from North Saddle Creek Road, you have the peanut. Yes, it slows a lot of cars down, but it doesn't slow them down once they get through it. They speed right up the hill over that Country Club hill there to the six-way stop. There are a lot of accidents right there. The speed bumps along the route down below on Country Club are pretty effective. Nobody's going to go over that speed bump at 50 miles an hour. They might not even see a peanut. And the peanut's just about busted up, by the way. Anyway, cars don't necessarily make the, the whole circle. Sometimes they cut around, go right over the top. But now, if you think about the, the land in 50th and 52nd from Dodge up Farnham Street going east, that's a pretty steep hill there also. Cars come up and then down real fast. They may not be paying attention, might not see that peanut. A speed bump there was every so often before that would be effective. But the problem here, folks, is that we're trying to build an urban core for UNMC and to attract people. Build it, and they will come. So this is a roundabout way of taking property to expand the width of that, those streets for the urban core Speedway and, and big buses. Now, my car is not a very large car, but my car next to another car going the opposite direction does not leave very much room for bicycles, let alone buses, or two lanes of highway going both ways, two lanes of cars going both ways. So this is really a very poor decision, and I don't think you ought to spend any more money on it. You should listen to the people that do live there. I don't want you taking one foot of my property. Yeah, you can legally take it, and you legally own from the street to the other side, to my side of the sidewalk. It doesn't make it right for you to take it. And that's still, in those areas, that's probably not white enough, so you're probably going to want more, which means, oh, maybe we'll have to, what's the word? Might have to blight it so that, so that we can do development. You know, there are people paying attention. You need to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Ellis, please. There's Rick Ellis here. All right? He may not, may not have been able to stick around. Next, we have Jim Elliston.
Hi, I'm Jim Elliston. I live at 302 South 52nd Street, on the southwest corner of, of Farnham, one of the stakeholders. And so my, just to give you a, just mentioning my background, I'm a finance guy, spend a lot of time looking at numbers. My wife's a computer programmer, spend a lot of time looking at numbers. Our three boys are engineers, they spend a lot of time looking at numbers. So when, when this opened up, we basically said, what do Elliston's do? Let's get into the data. And today, I want to present an argument in five different slots, the risk to pedestrian safety, the uneven traffic flow, the study, all about roundabouts are not equal in the voice of Dundee. And so the, first of all, pedestrian safety. Dundee, we have one of the most walkable neighborhoods in the city. That's not just Jim Elliston's opinion, that's data-based, right? It has a walk score of 79. In the Redfin article, it published the 10 most walkable neighborhoods in Omaha, we were number five in the city. There's a lot of foot traffic. It's people that walkers, joggers, dog walkers, schoolchildren, and the elderly in our neighborhood. I met a 95-year-old woman that every day, she stops and rests in my yard when she's on her walk. It's a very walkable neighborhood. You hear urban planners, they'll talk, and we heard it today, tell you roundabouts are safe for pedestrians. That's great, that's an opinion. Andy Singer published an article called, titled, "Are Roundabouts Safe for Pedestrians?" Mr. Singer is the co-chair of the St. Paul Bicycle Coalition. In that article, he states, "The reality is, there is no good data concerning pedestrian safety because most roundabouts are in locations with little of any pedestrian traffic." Most roundabouts are in, located in areas where there's little of any pedestrian traffic. Remember, we have the fifth most walkable neighborhood in the city. In search, and he cites two other articles that support that, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, a study by the U.S. Access Board, a federal agency committed to accessible design. In searching for data, I found an interesting study that was conducted by Dr. Chris Mahorn and Dr. Ralph Clark, psychology professors, one at North Carolina, one at North Carolina State. They had a thesis, the, you know, that at a roundabout, traffic, drivers do not recognize pedestrians. So they launched a study to explore how drivers manage negotiating roundabouts. The participants were presented with 80 visual stimuli of driving situations commonly encountered at roundabouts. Results supported their hypothesis, the pedestrians are not noticed at roundabouts a significant amount of time, making the pedestrian automobile interaction a safety hazard. That's a study, psychological study on images. Justin Zetterman, who's a project engineer with the Public Works Department for the City of Omaha, he stated in agreement that there is no good data on pedestrian safety for, for roundabouts. Please note that at our intersections of 50th and 52nd Street, there have been zero accidents based on the city data we pulled over the last 10 years. Because our, our community is so walkable, you cannot compare it to other roundabouts. You have to look at the walkable data. Uneven traffic flow, my next topic. As we got into the data, we saw that 80%, as much as 80% of, of the traffic on those streets goes east-west, 20% to 30% goes north-south. That's a material uneven flow of traffic. The U.S. Department of Transportation, the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety, and Bryant Fick in his article, "Are Roundabouts a Silver Bullet?", do not recommend roundabouts be constructed when there's an uneven flow of traffic. We have an uneven flow of traffic at those intersections. The strong flow of traffic going east-west during the rush hours will not allow traffic going north and south, causing pedestrian, causing car and pedestrian traffic to get backed up. The only way you can cross is to wait for a break in that east-west traffic flow. Pedestrians will have to wait not only for a break in their east-west flow, but also have to be aware of the traffic from, from the north and the south, those cars that have queued up to wait for that break in traffic. Are they going to yield to the pedestrians, which they should, but will they? Will that pedestrian take a chance and go out? Just picture it, 10-year-old child walking to Dundee Elementary, standing on a corner, traffic flying. Just picture it, ten-year-old child walking to Dundee Elementary, standing on a corner, traffic flying by. The projections in the study is over eleven thousand cars will travel that corridor on a daily basis in twenty, twenty twenty, twenty forty, I'm sorry. That flow of traffic coming, the child will be sitting there waiting for the break in traffic and also trying to see the cars that have queued up behind her that wanna go north and seeing the cars coming at her that wanna go south. There's a break in traffic, who's jumping in? Is the child jumping in, is the north car going, is the south car coming? I don't know, sounds pretty dangerous to me. Do we really wanna risk that in a highly dense uh community? Huge issue. Case study.
Jim, I'm gonna have you wrap up a little bit.
All right, give me. Case study. When you look at the data in the case study, they were challenged because of COVID. They didn't use current data, they threw that out because of the impact of COVID. I work in an insurance company, understand that. They also, there's a lot of things that you question whether they considered. The growing businesses that have sent people home in a hybrid situation. The recent adjustments in the Blackstone District, which doesn't allow, you know, encourage commuters to come into the into the neighborhood. The changes in the streetlights that were made in April of twenty twenty-one. We've seen at our intersection a seventy percent reduction in crashes since those were done. In twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-one, there were five crashes, which represented a seventy percent reduction. In twenty twenty-two, there was only three crashes. Two of those, and that, two of those crashes were side-by-side crashes when when it was going one way all the way, they turned into each other. You know, you look at the the growth of the urban core, did they consider that? It seems like the numbers they're putting together runs in conflict with the projections of what the city is doing in the urban core. When you look at the urban core, the housing study that Zimmerman and Falk did, they're projecting three thousand six hundred additional housing units over the next five years. The Urban Core Strategic Plan is projecting a growth of thirty thousand jobs and thirty thousand residents in the urban core over the next twenty years. Why are we projecting increased traffic volume? It seems like they think the jobs are coming from West Omaha. Marty Shooter Shoot Kurt, in the article that was published in the World Herald, October twenty-first, former head of Omaha Planning, you know, cited that between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, thirteen thousand people had moved east of Seventy-second Street. The population is moving down where the jobs are. Was that taken into consideration? Why wouldn't you wanna wait to collect data on on the true traffic volumes, the impact of the urban core? Let's not forget the transportation agenda that's in front of the city. But one of the justifications used to support the orbit and the streetcar design is reduced traffic. The vision the city has for that is basically you're gonna take the orbit down into the urban core and ride the streetcar around, right? It's gonna reduce, they're reducing parking facilities in the urban core because they're basically saying cars won't travel in.
I'm gonna have you summarize, Jim, I think there was two other things you wanted to mention, right? The timing of the lights and Dundee perspective?
Yeah, I wanna just mention all roundabouts aren't equal. So a couple of things. In a conversation with Todd Fetscher, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, in a meeting with the mayor, he was asked a specific question, cause he was citing roundabouts all over the city. Can you give us a roundabout that's comparable to ours? Uneven traffic flow and volume where there's houses on the corner? His statement was, yes. Go to Seventy-eighth and Crown Point Avenue, they absolutely love it, absolutely love it. My wife and I went to Seventy-eighth and Crown Point the next day, knocked on the door. First door we knocked on, they're the worst thing the city could have ever put on the street. We have an accident or property damage at least once every two weeks. Just yesterday, we had someone hit a street pole, split the pole. A few weeks later, we had a car almost in my driveway and hit my vehicles. Hitting the street signs that are here telling you to yield, but no one ever does. We've had to have the signs replaced at least four or five times because the street fence has been wrecked at least a dozen times. No one slows down, they speed through them, they speed over them, they are horrible. Another one, not only we've seen people get stuck navigating roundabouts, there have been winners in salt trucks that struggles to maneuver through the roundabouts. I'd like to state, the third one, I'd like to state there have been at least two occasions of drivers going directly over the middle of the roundabouts, damaging the vehicle and coming to arrest within inches of my fence. That was shocking. So we went and pulled data. Why would the city engineer send us to that location, the people that loved it? Does the data support or those just disgruntled taxpayers? Well, we pulled the city, the data, the four-year average before they put the roundabouts at.
We need to wrap it up.
Two and a half crashes per year. After that, seven crashes reported in twenty twenty-two. Three of those crashes, the reason for the crash? Object in the road. If you look at the, on the crash data, know what the object in the road was? The roundabout. The roundabout was the object in the road. Seven crashes, almost triple the number. The last thing I'd like to to note is the voices of Dundee. Because not all of our stakeholders could be here, not all of our residents could be here. On March twenty-third, we started a petition drive to capture the voices of Dundee. We worked with the Dundee Memorial Park Association to promote an online signup. Today, I'd like to put in a record, twelve paper signatures of the stake, eight stakeholders, one hundred and seventy-eight additional papers, signatures of our Dundee neighbors, six hundred and thirty-one online signatures of our Dundee neighbors for a total of eight hundred and twenty-one residents that are opposing the funding of the design of the roundabout. One of the, one of the key principles of Project Zero that we heard about is to be successful, you need the support of the neighborhood. I don't think that's the the support of the neighborhood. I point out on number line six sixteen of our online petition, Susan Buffett weighed in and she said, I'm signing for myself on behalf of my father and his wife who live at fifty-five oh five Farnham Street. They do not want the roundabouts. So if I could, I'd like to respect, you know, submit this into public record of of the support. Thank you for the additional time.
You bet.
I apologize for a lot of data.
Yeah, I know you're passionate about it, have worked on it for a long time. Folks, uh, no clapping, all right? We can't have that, um, that would be considered out of order in the city council chambers, but we'll submit the signatures for the public record. And I had Jim just, you know, previously sent that to the clerk as well. Okay, we have two more testifiers in opposition, then we'll get the council questions. Uh, the next testifier in opposition is Chris Riser, I think I said that correctly. And after Chris is Alexander Payne.
Can I testify?
I'll give you a chance afterwards.
I'm in, is that okay?
Okay, yeah.
My name's Christine Riser. Address is forty-six eighty-eight Mayberry Street. But I'm here today because I lived for thirty-one years, three houses south of Fifty-second and Farnham Street. And since a lot of us, maybe graduates of our wonderful Nebraska medicine, we know through the scientific method that observation is one of the most important things in determining accurate solutions to problems in the scientific world. I only have four points to make, and I believe I can make those in one minute. First of all, after living four houses down for thirty-one years, I had an opportunity to observe the traffic patterns twenty-four hours a day, more or less, for thirty-one years. And I would like to back up what Jim Elliston said in there, that is, there are approximately eleven thousand vehicles passing through those two intersections every day. So um, we have thousands of people coming from West Omaha now down to the midtown and the downtown area that we never had before. But it's getting more and more with the expansion of Nebraska medicine. More cars, more people having to be at their desk at eight o'clock in the morning, more traffic. And we don't have a wide four-lane street there. The people who live on those streets can't even park on the street because it's so tight. When you take eleven thousand cars and you add to it, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna boggle everything up. My second point is, both Fifty-second Street and South Fiftieth Street are both emergency vehicle routes. So we have like these triple-decker fire trucks, ambulances, and police vehicles racing down South Fiftieth Street, South Fifty-second Street. And I just wanna ask you to imagine, if you can help me out, what's it gonna be like between four and six in the afternoon when we get a fire truck running through those roundabouts? Plus, that portion of the eleven thousand vehicles that are now traveling through that intersection. You know, can our emergency vehicles get through a roundabout? Because they're gonna slow things down to about fifteen miles an hour. But it doesn't look like those emergency vehicles are gonna be able to fulfill their purpose with those roundabouts on those busy, narrow streets. My last point is, I agree with um a lot of my opponents. There are a lot of good roundabouts, but it depends on where they are and if they fit. And in the intersection of Fiftieth and Fifty-second Street, they don't fit. And I know the mayor likes roundabouts, and I say, great, and they're wonderful places for those in our city. But not on Fifty-second Farnham or Fiftieth and Farnham. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Payne. Welcome.
Mr. President, esteemed council people. Uh, Alexander Payne, fifty-one sixty Farnham Street, uh, six eight one three two. It's been a long day, I'll keep it brief. My family and I have been stakeholders at the corner of Fifty-second and Farnham for nearly seventy years, since nineteen fifty-six. A block away at the corner of Fifty-third and Farnham, my family's had a house for nearly eighty years, actually eighty-one years since nineteen forty-two, still in the family. We wish to lend our support to the opposition to the roundabouts uh for all the reasons that my esteemed neighbors have mentioned. And I I don't, it's not a knee-jerk opposition to change. History teaches us anything, it's that nothing is as constant as change. But we do live in a very historic neighborhood, among many historic neighborhoods in Omaha. Bemis Park, areas of North Omaha, South Omaha, Country Club, Morton Meadows. You know, we have beautiful neighborhoods and we visit old cities in New England, Charleston, Savannah, for example, and we marvel at how preserved those neighborhoods are over the centuries. And as Omaha continues to age over the decades and hopefully over the centuries, these neighborhoods will be even more esteemed and treasured. And it does seem odd to me to be shoehorning roundabouts into a neighborhood not designed for them. And again, for all the reasons that my neighbors mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends testimony from those that have signed in. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to oppose? Uh, come on down. Can I see a show of hands? We have three more, okay.
Hi, I'm a stakeholder, I'm Kathy Collins. My property is at Fifty-second and Farnham. I'm at fifty-one twenty-one Cummings Street. And I'm here to second everything that was said here today and appeal to your common sense and practicality to please vote no for furthering this project. As everybody has said, it is not the right fit. And we, as a community, have several solutions that not only would work, but save us all a lot of money. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent.
Good afternoon, and I'll be brief, I have three points. My name is Holly Herman. I live at one oh six South Fifty-first Avenue, and I've lived there for thirty-four years with my husband. Before that, I grew up at seven oh four South Fifty-second Street. My best friends were on Fifty-first Avenue, so when we had a chance to buy a house there, we jumped at it. There are just a couple of points I wanted to bring to attention. When you suggested that we look at the roundabout at Forty-second and Q, I called it up on my cellphone. Forty-second and Q has nothing to do with what's going in at Dundee. Forty-second and Q, there are no houses, there's no streets, there are no businesses. There, it's huge. So if you're gonna come up with an example that's gonna help us, do your homework. Second, when you're talking about slowing down Farnham Street because of um, you know, because of midtown crossing and Blackstone and Med Center, we're gonna slow things down, we're gonna put in these roundabouts, it's gonna slow things down. I'm all for that. But when you talk about slowdown, that's gonna mean increase on the other two arterials. Now, one of them is Dodge. I live two doors down from Dodge. Dodge is very busy, but it could probably handle a little bit more traffic. Leavenworth to our south, where I spent my childhood, Leavenworth is so tiny now. You know, there there's a bike lane there, they're putting up twenty-nine units of condos at Fifty-fourth and Leavenworth. Leavenworth is getting busier and busier, and there's no place to expand Leavenworth. So when you talk about slowing down and ushering cars into arterials, it's not gonna be Dodge, and it's probably not gonna be Leavenworth. What it's gonna be is Fifty-first Avenue, and that's where I live. I, when those roundabouts go in and if those cars are waiting their turn and they get tired of waiting, they're gonna take a right turn onto Fifty-first Avenue and go forty-five miles an hour to go one block to Dodge. It happens when there are car wrecks, and yes, there are car wrecks. But those are anomalies, they are not a given situation. A roundabout is asking for people to speed through treasured historic neighborhoods. We walked our children every day to Dundee School. I walked to the movie theater, I walked to the library, I walked to a community garden. I love living in Dundee because it is, we are able to walk. We have two little terriers who are really cute, but not that smart. And when we go to cross Fifty-second Street, which we do at least twice every day, I won't be able to hold them, to get them across a roundabout in a safe way. So as others have said, oh, there's one more thing. The city owns signs, I'm told there are more than fifty signs in the in the inventory of the city that are electric signs that say, speed limit thirty, you are going forty-five. Now, there're gonna be a lot of signs taken down on Farnham once it becomes two-way, every day. So how about putting up a sign or two that tells people, you're going too fast? Speed limit is thirty, you're going forty-five. How about enforcement? I can't recall the last time I saw someone pulled over for speeding. I, you know, I know it's an arterial, we can't have a speed bump, but Western Avenue between Fifty-second and Fifty-fourth has a speed bump. And it, it's it's useful. If you're talking about traffic calming.
Have you summarize if you could?
Please think about something other than it's expensive, intrusive, unwelcome development.
Thank you. We have one more opponent, please come down.
My name is Pat Snyder, I'm from three oh two South Fiftieth Street, live right on the corner of Fiftieth and Farnham. The average driver in the city of Omaha doesn't know the difference between a stop sign and a yield sign. And I would say most of them, if you asked them what the right-of-way law, they wouldn't know that either. And those are the two things that control your roundabouts. Now, we have blind people walking through Fiftieth and Farnham. We have disabled people in wheelchairs going through there. We have senior citizens walking through there. We have mothers tagging five or six kids behind them going through there. And we also have children who go to school in the morning to go through there. And most of them have to do two crosses because they're coming up from the south on the east side, and they have to go to the north and then get over the west side in order to get up to the school up there at Dundee. So you have a lot of traffic that's going through there, and guess what? Every one of them has to push a button to get a walk sign, so they can get through that intersection. Now, I have seen uh no pedestrians killed or even injured in that intersection in the last thirty years I've lived there, not one. Well, I do have one person on a bicycle about three years ago, and it was questionable as to who ran the red light. Whether it was a bicycle or the car, we really, we'll probably never know. But my last point is this, and that is that, you know, this area, like everybody else has said, was not designed for that. You know, if you if you pick the area and you design it around, you could, if you've ever been to Europe, you see some of these roundabouts, there's there's no houses around these things. Most of them have parks in that rounder. One last point is this. One last point is this. This was at, by the way, I was the one that brought up the emergency vehicles going through there in the first meeting at UNO, because at 50th Street, they're going through there all time of the day. And the last point is this, and that is that there was an engineer, I believe he was from Lincoln, that was at the Brownell Talbot, said that his kid didn't have any problem going through it. And I said, "Well, what about the winter time?" He says, "Well, he just stands on the little, little medium in the middle there and waits till he can get around the traffic." And I said, "Well, that's fine for Lincoln, because I've lived in Lincoln. It's flat as a pancake." But Farnham is not. In the 50th and Farnham in the winter time, I've observed about every third car loses control coming into that intersection in inclement weather. How would you like to be a 60-pound kid dealing with a two-ton vehicle? Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the end of testimony from opponents. I will give Mr. Resleman an opportunity to address any issues that may be new he wants to address. Although I will note, I know council members will have questions, but I'll afford you that opportunity if you'd like. And I know a few things that came up I might suggest you address are the ADA's concerns, emergency vehicles, and the snowplowing.
Yeah, so with respect to emergency vehicles, my understanding is that the chief of the fire department sent her support to you guys. So I'll just bring that up. The design of the roundabouts, take into account emergency vehicles, being able to negotiate it. ADA, the crosswalks are ADA compliant. There's a misconception that you have to get into the center of the roundabout to cross. These are actually in the approaches to the roundabout, where it's a single-lane crossing, one at a time. There's a channelizing island, which is a refuge for pedestrians. The yielding rate at roundabouts is significantly high. There is no need to wait for a gap in traffic. The legal crosswalk means that vehicles have to yield, and the rate at which they yield at roundabouts is extremely high. And that speaks with the safety data that I discussed earlier. And what was the other item?
Uh, snowplowing, I believe, came up.
Oh, snowplowing. I know there's others in Public Works that would be able to talk more detailed. But I know that we have 23 in the city, and that the roundabouts are clear, just like all other streets.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to address at this point?
No.
Thank you. We'll close public hearing. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. In preparing for this today, I don't know where to start. We had multiple meetings from the beginning on this. I will say, before I get into my remarks, I truly want to thank Public Works, Jeff, or FHU, and the neighbors in general that I met with in community meetings, over coffee, on your front porch in your living room. Because, believe it or not, when we sit on this council, I've had some people say, "Well, you already made up your mind." Well, believe it or not, we deliberate on this, we talk to each other, we talk to Public Works, talk to neighbors, so this has been going on for a long time. And I know when I was campaigning up in Dundee Memorial Park, there were the two-way all-day signs. So as I talk to constituents, kind of get a flavor for what everybody wants to do, it was all over the map at that time in my view. So going through this process, I guess I'll just talk about a couple of meetings I went to. April 25, 2022. I think it was a reference, it was at UNO, talking about the proposed conversion of the intersection for roundabouts. And I, as we got information on that and kind of get outreach and hear from constituents, you try to really block out the noise, at least I do, and try to get a flavor and an understanding, because you got smart people that want to have public safety at the front end of this decision. So I went on August 21, after having the community meetings, to knock on the eight neighbors' doors on 50th and 52nd, many of her here today, and just start there and find out what they want. What do you think? What are your thoughts? Of course, intruding in their yards is concerning, removing trees, all those things. So one of the things that come out of that, when I just did that, to start getting a better feel for what was going on. There was a request to meet with our staff of the council, which was done on September 26, 2022. And several people attended that. Public Works was there to get the concern of the people that were impacted. Again, we're talking about everybody in my district and my friend Councilmember Festerson's district, but the city as well. So I was narrowing in on at least those property owners. That was a meeting September 26. And they had requested that, hey, we would like to talk to the mayor. Now, Mayor Stotter, I am not on her staff. She's the executive branch. I reach out to her staff, and the mayor, to her credit, graciously accepted the invitation to meet with those property owners on October 21 in her office. It was for an hour. And I thanked the mayor for that. That was important, at least so people's voices started getting heard. And again, it's not just these property owners impacted, but at that time, I wanted to get a flavor again for where their thoughts were and what their concerns were. Plenty more meetings, but I'll focus in on Council President Festerson and I. It was referenced, there was a meeting November 14, 2022, at Brownell Talbot. Probably say there was 50, 55, 60 people were there. And we talked, and we listened, and we heard, and then we processed after that, right? Somebody said to me in that meeting, "Well, you already made up your mind." Well, believe it or not, you go methodically through this to try to get a better gauge and understanding. So that's what I did. We had that meeting, good feedback. There was a, I would say, the overwhelming number of people in that room were against the roundabouts. I talked to several people afterwards. I talked to people weeks after that. So going through this and getting to where we're at today, thinking about, in fact, one of the emails I got from a constituent that I spent Sunday and Monday reading, really getting caught up and getting a better understanding, was to my former council member, Chris Jaram, that held this seat. And it was talking about two-way all-day. That was a consensus in Public Works. I love them. They're experts. They advise what they want to do, and the consultant did in this issue here. So as I scribbled a bunch of notes here today, I just, again, appreciate all the input that we've had. And I even sat, one of the neighbors was gracious enough to let me sit on his back driveway to just watch traffic on Farnham Street. That was, I appreciated a constituent allowing me to do that. Not to say, "You need to do this, or you need to do that." Hey, come and look. Understand for yourself. And then, from that time to now, you ask questions, you talk to colleagues, you get their feel, you talk to staff, you talk to the experts. When we get, at least to where I'm at here, with the feedback I've had, and knowing that whatever decision you make, people are going to be upset. I try to make a decision based on, what do my constituents say? What do I think is good? And then you just move forward. So in my conclusion, I want to make a motion to vote against the roundabouts. Not because I don't appreciate all the work that was done with the experts, but it's my belief that I have heard, and I'm sure I'll get some emails from people that are upset about this, but it was very clear to me that the consensus of my district, especially that neighborhood, was not to support the roundabouts. So that's my motion today. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. I wanted to defer remarks to Councilman Bagley, as this is his district. And I don't normally jump the queue with other lights on, and there are other lights on. But in this case, I want to share my remarks to... I was going to say, I've been dealing with this issue probably for the longest in the room, about 50 years. But Mr. Payne has me beat. I found out his family's been dealing with this for 80 years. So with that in mind, I wanted to share my thoughts too, and also my analysis of what we have here. So I did grow up in the neighborhood, and I still live nearby. I've always supported the two-way all-day conversion. But clearly, what's being proposed here with the roundabouts is causing consternation and division in the neighborhood. And I think it's important we listen to the neighborhood. I'm not philosophically opposed to roundabouts. I've lived other places as well that have done this and where they have worked. Boston, for example, they're everywhere in Boston. It's just a way of life, and people get used to it, and they have worked in some instances. Some of them are roundabouts, some of them are rotaries, some of them are altogether different. And I understand it could be an important component of Vision Zero that's still being developed, and that I'm anxious to see, because I think that is a very important effort in our city to try and reduce what we have seen in terms of an increase in pedestrian fatalities throughout the city. So I'm anxious to see that study get finalized. But we're talking about this particular instance and this particular project right now. I did appreciate the meeting we had with the Dundee Memorial Park Association and their constant communication on this issue with us. I thought their recent letter to the council was a pretty good analysis of what we're facing and explaining their position, which was opposed. There were a couple of things, though, I wanted to clarify that I think weren't entirely accurate in that letter. And that was that there will not be a roundabout at 46th and Farnham Street. That development, as part of what UNMC is doing, and the redevelopment of that old steelwork building right there, well, at one point was considered for a roundabout, but will be a four-way traffic light situation. That's been confirmed to the council. That was not correct in that letter, so I just wanted to make sure folks knew that what was happening at 46th. We did talk with UNMC. I know that there were some thoughts early on that they must be... they impetus for this, or they're advocating for these roundabouts. That's not the case. I think they do also support the two-way conversion, but are agnostic about the roundabouts. I wouldn't say they're proponents of the roundabouts. And then there is one thing that I think is important for folks to understand if we're opposed to this proposition today. And Jeff, this might be a question for you, or if not, maybe Mr. Stube. I want folks to understand that I think the proposition being proposed here by Public Works and the mayor's office is that they're willing to go two-way all-day, but only if there's roundabouts. Would that be a correct statement?
Jeff Resleman, Public Works, City Traffic Engineer. We would be, we would need to see some kind of improvement at those intersections to provide for better operations. The study also looked at safety. That was a part of the study, just like operations was. And because of the documented safety concerns at the intersection, that's why a roundabout improvement was recommended at the time of a two-way conversion. If a improvement at the intersection is not done, so we just convert... If a proposition is made to just convert to two-way and do nothing, it is my professional opinion that things would be much less safe. And the study showed specifically that the operations would be well into the level of Service F category. Because arguments, I think I've heard, have been, "Well, it works for 20 of the 24 hours of the day." Well, the four that we're not talking about are the busiest hours of the day. And that's the whole reason the operations of that corridor are what they are. We would be introducing more vehicles conflic... So there's no turn lanes at 50th and 52nd. And without turn lanes and an increase in traffic during the peak hours, we would be having opposing traffic that doesn't exist today. And so that conflict is the reason why Public Works wouldn't support that change without some kind of improvement, and specifically a safety improvement at 50th and 52nd.
Okay, thank you. That was my understanding of your position too. So although I'm interested in the two-way all-day proposition, and always have been, I want folks to understand that I don't think that's the position of Public Works or the mayor's office at this point, if this doesn't move forward today. So I just want to have, to make sure we have that general understanding together. The other thing I would say is also totally off limits from my perspective is the pedestrian crossing that kids take to get to Dundee School that leads to the subway underneath Dodge Street. At one point, that was being suggested to be removed as well by Public Works, and we fought back on that, and that has stayed. So that's non-negotiable, from my perspective, regardless of what happens here and regardless of what happens with the two-way conversion now or at some point in the future. So with those clarifications, I just want it to be known that I'm supporting the neighbors today. I support the two-way conversion, always have, but I just don't think this is the right solution at the right time for them, which is very evident by the testimony we had here today, the 600 petition signatures, and the volumes of emails I know Councilman Bagley and I have received. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the, actually, let me start with this. With, I don't doubt the benefits of roundabouts and what they can bring for traffic calming, traffic solutions. But someone said something today, and I usually try to credit and cite where appropriate, but I don't remember who said it, but when they said it was shoehorned, I thought that was kind of a good term. Look, I do think roundabouts are, and are needed, and will be utilized even more going forward. But I think it needs to be in the appropriate places and not shoehorned in. One of the things, and then I do know I will be able to cite this one, is that I think both Jim Elston and Chris Reiser brought up components or ideas of gathering more data. And I think that's, I was prepared today to make a motion to place this on file. And I know there's a little bit of a nuance there, maybe, in difference from what is being proposed, or what was moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley to vote for denial of this, rather than to place it on file. I thought by denying it, then it's done. And if we place it on file, it essentially is done. But I think as we want to move forward on, I think eventually everyone wants to get to a solution where it's two-way all-day. And I think if we had the ability to place it on file, that gives us the opportunity then to keep the notion alive, because I think at this point, we've just been kind of confirmed that it's, that two-day, 24/7 is probably not something that's going to be pursued at this time. And I think by placing it on file, it kept that opportunity, I think, more alive. So that was, I wanted to explain that, the difference in the nuance of what I originally wanted to support on to lay it over, I'm sorry, to place it on file, rather than to place it for flat-out denial. I do want to talk about a couple of things. Again, to the professionals who have put both the city and with FHU, you know, we know that they're not going to bring us something that, in theory, doesn't make sense in the right, again, maybe not shoehorned in, but in the right situation, as in like 42nd and Q and the Peanut and other areas. And I would suggest that maybe one of the places we look at putting a roundabout in might actually be at the convergence of Happy Hollow, Western, 52nd, forget the other streets that all converge there to Mr. Manhart's comments about coming in at different angles, but I digress. I think, I think it's, they wouldn't be bringing us these solutions and have the considerations for emergency vehicles and snowplows and ADA. Those are all, those are not taken lightly by our professionals. And so to, I know that those issues were considered and addressed. And to bring those up as, you know, that they weren't, I think is... I don't think that that gives the respect to the professionals who do these jobs, day in and day out, because I know they were considered. One thing I will take a little bit of issue with is the data. And again, this maybe goes to another reason for maybe placing it on file, is that we don't know maybe enough about what employment or what man count, women count, employee counts in buildings are going to be going forward after COVID. I'm in the commercial real estate industry and kind of live in this realm every day. And I would tell you, with the addition of what's happening at UNMC with Project Next and other things, and what's happening in our downtown area, and really in all parts of our city. I mean, we're so blessed to live in a city that I think has come out of COVID probably better than... live in a city that I think has come out of COVID probably better than most communities. We're the envy of many around the country. And so I don't know that there's enough data there to say one way or the other, Jim. And that's another reason why I would like to keep that, you know, this alive, to look at other, or where we're going to be in a couple of years' time to maybe have access to some more of that information. So I came in here today wanting to support placing it on file. That wasn't the motion in second. I think I'm reading tea leaves, so I know that it won't get to the point where my motion would be taken up. So in that sense, knowing that if you put them in today, it's going to be a lot harder to take out. Someone else said that. I'm sorry, I can't cite you. I'll be supportive of Councilmember Bagley's motion.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Oh, thank you. And I think the one agreement, and I'm not saying that our city or our consultant didn't take into consideration highly pedestrian traffic. I think roundabouts take into consideration traffic. You only have to cross one lane. That's great, if you can see. It becomes very problematic if you don't have the light and you don't have the crosswalks. I think in the roundabouts that I go through quite a bit, and I go through them not only in Omaha but over into Papillion, because we're not the only city where they're building them in, and I use the ones going down in Papillion, too, but they're on, they're on heavy traffic streets, but not necessarily heavy pedestrian traffic. And I would just like to see more data and studies on roundabouts and high pedestrian traffic. That's what we have in this neighborhood. So I'm not against roundabouts either. Again, it's putting them in a certain, where are we putting them? So although we, maybe you could reduce traffic accidents, and maybe you can reduce some traffic fatalities, but you're not reducing pedestrian or bicycling fatalities. So in essence, you're not, you're just maybe trading one for the other. And so then, for that, I don't think that these would necessarily make it more safe for people. I was with Brinker. What I would like to do is, I would have liked to place it on file because I also think, I would like to see Farnham go two-way all day. I mean, I've been a proponent of that, I think, since the first sign went up and since someone out here moved into, onto 51st and Farnham. So, and I became aware and watched the cars and have to back out of the driveway, and I'm always afraid that someone's going to come down the other way, right, and hit you. So I've done that multiple times. I do think that we, something needs to probably be done in the area, especially with everything, but maybe this isn't the right thing. Because again, I am concerned about safety, but this may not make it more safe. And I think I would like to see more data on what we do. Bicyclists that travel on the outside lane, you can't have bike lanes in roundabouts. So then when we have this increase in wanting to have bike lanes for the safety of bicyclists, apparently bike lanes in roundabouts are actually more dangerous for bicyclists than having a bike lane at all. Again, those are things that I think we have to consider that I really haven't seen us consider. So I am very concerned about the significant safety concerns of putting roundabouts in this particular area of town with the amount of pedestrian traffic. So although it works in Boston, I understand that, but I'd like to see where it works, because I would assume Boston would have some very similar neighborhoods to this area of Dundee. And are they putting them in there? And then how are disabled, blind, how are they dealing with them being able to successfully traverse without the lights or the signals that tell you it's safe to cross? So again, I would like to see more data on roundabouts so that we're just not trading off one fatality for another. So for that, I would have supported the motion to place it on file, just so that we're not losing that hope that maybe you can go to two-way all day. So that would have been my reason for not just saying no, because it sounds like we're killing the whole thing, which I think a lot of people have worked very hard to get it two-way all day. So although no, I'll support you, Councilman Bagley, but I really would prefer to place it on, to place it on file, just to not give up on maybe getting more data and more studies for making it two-way all day.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've appreciated all the testimony today from the audience and from the fellow council members. I guess I'll be the one that asks Dan, Mr. Bagley, would you consider changing your motion to put this on file so that that, those kind of things can be researched and worked out?
I appreciate the question, Councilmember Rowe. My answer is no. But I know in the future, this does not prevent us from doing anything as far as studies go or addressing anything. And I want to be clear also that I was, or in my research into this, I thought that the two-way all-day was certainly some that Council President Festerson and I had talked about publicly and with constituents. So to answer your question, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay, I respect that and I appreciate that. My only concern is that, listening to Mr. Reiselman and the mayor, I think they absolutely will not pursue a two-way all day if we vote no. So just so it's, I think Mr. Harding and Melton are right, it's pretty much a done, dead deal in my view if we vote no today. And I, too, would prefer to place it on file. But I'll respect, I mean, I respect you, Mr. Bagley.
And just a reminder on what we're voting on here, it's a design contract for the roundabouts, right? And so I think that's, that gets to Councilman Bagley's preference, I think, in this instance, which hopefully doesn't mean we can't still address the issue sometime in the future. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized. Mr. Palermo is in the queue. What's your point of order, Mr. Harding?
Not just on the roundabouts. It did have alternate solutions. So that's...
But the design contract today is for roundabouts.
I understand that.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you're looking at the time and you've been paying attention, I think we know where the votes are. So I'll skip all the questions I had for Public Works, which were questions that I picked up along from the public comment. But I want to save it for one comment, and it was the comment of, or this is the comment I want to make. Sorry, it's late for me as well. Mr. and Mrs. Elliston, I don't know if you, and I don't want you to come up, because that'll take even longer. You asked me for a meeting. We met in my office. And I think pretty quickly you said, well, what's your decision? And we are so far from this point of where we are of gathering data, listening to both sides. And I said, well, I haven't made up my mind. And I said, but show me the list of people who are against this in the neighborhood, because there's power in numbers, is what I said. And I believe you said you didn't have a list. So now you do have a list, and you have a list of so many people that now my decision is easy. I'm not anti-roundabout. I know 42nd Q roundabout has been mentioned numerous times, and sure, at that time, people were against that. But I will tell you, it works very well now, but they are not the same. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm not saying I don't tighten my seatbelt a little more when I approach 42nd Q, because I do, but totally different, but that does work in that space it's in. So because we have been shown power in numbers, I've listened to my colleague here, Mr. Bagley, and Mr. Festerson, who's put a lot of time and energy into this, obviously, I'll be agreeing with my colleagues. I will say there was a point of bringing it up, or placing it on file, and the reason I would have voted no for that is because it's not where we want to be. So I don't want to put something on file that is not the direction that the neighborhood wants to go. I would put something on file that maybe a technicality has it to where we don't want to start over. But for me, we're nowhere close to where we need to be for these intersections. So I would have voted no on placing on file. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's been a motion and a second to deny. Roll call.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson.
It's a motion to deny.
Melton. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank everyone for their testimony. Thank you for being here.
We'll now go back to item 10 and pick up for council discussion.
We're now back to item 10. We'll give the room a second to clear here and call the applicant for number 10 back up. All right, folks, we're going to encourage you to clear out of the room and maybe congregate in the hallway there if you want, so we can continue with some public hearings here. Okay. Thanks for sticking around, guys. We'll now go back to item number 10, and if you want to come to the podium here. Ms. Melton and Mr. Bagley are kind of important to this conversation. Are you... Okay. Hold on one second.
Of course. Thank you for the extra time that you gave us. It's a little tough decision.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks for sticking around, too. Okay, public hearing has been closed. Is there a council member that would like to put their light on?
It appears your lawyer had to leave a little early. Hopefully, you had time to kind of discuss things that we talked about earlier. Where, do you have a wish?
Thank you for the extra time. It was a little tough decision to make.
I understand. I understand. So do you have a response for us? Obviously, you had already agreed to not be a classy, and she already withdrew that for you.
Yeah, we decided with my brother, with all due respect, being a club, yes, it's kind of scary, kind of, close 1 o'clock, I mean, all our business is gone. I'm talking about at least 70% of our business kind of hits between 1:00 and 1:40, 1:50. But we're willing, if it's possible, to do 1:30, and not let anybody else in, have signs that says 4:15, close at 1:30, and escort people out. That would be, I hope, you know, we can try that first. And if there's some other complaint, we'll be happy to go back to 1 o'clock.
Okay, I'm chair, and since it's in Councilman Bagley's district, I think I would be, I know that we had talked about wanting it at 1. I would be supportive of the 1:30, and we could review it, you know, the next time you come up for a liquor license. If there's no tavern reports and there's no problems, it gives you some incentive.
Thank you.
I would be okay with the 1:30 if Councilman Bagley is.
Thank you. I would, for sure, be in agreement with that, with the stipulations that Councilmember Melton mentioned.
Of course. And we'll have signs, like I mentioned, in the bathrooms and outside. So people, we don't get aggressive, because sometimes they get so excited, 4:15, because being as a club, they're ready for more.
And listen, we want you to be successful. We want you to have a good club. We just want to make sure everyone in the club that's drinking is over 21, right? I mean, and that if they get too intoxicated, you quit serving them. And that if they're getting into fights, what I don't want is for you to think if there is a tavern report that somehow you're in trouble. When I read a tavern report where there was a domestic violence incident and the bar and your security handled it correctly.
Yes.
I will call you and commend you on your tavern report. So just remember, tavern reports in and of themselves are not bad. I mean, we read lots of tavern reports. We don't call the bars in. I mean, there are times we've said, let's send them a letter and tell them good job, right? You might get a tavern report, that's just because there was an incident, but it doesn't necessarily mean you were doing anything wrong. And there's a difference, and that's how we read them, okay? But I think that this is a good compromise right now for the problems that we've had over the last two years. But the hope of, with your new security and what you have in place, and I'm pretty convinced that, I hope you don't, I hope you don't lose your, you got three security people that are, sound good, organized, and tough. I wouldn't say anything, because you don't, at this point, I think what we're saying is, we're going to recommend an approval. Hopefully, we have the votes. So just letting you know, from what we've talked about in Law Committee, if there is anything, we will call you back. But at this point, I have to tell you, when we put you on for long form, I was expecting today to have a motion to send down to Lincoln that we did not recommend your liquor license. So I think you've come a long way from when we told you to file for the long form.
Lost 20 pounds. I need 50 more.
I'm glad you can think of the positive. All right? That guy right behind you, though, Mr. McCoy? Yes, Mr. McCoy. Did you want to say anything? Because I know you stood up. Okay.
No.
I just wanted to make sure. Were you just actually trying to tell him, you know, you don't need to talk so much?
We're in a good place right now.
Okay. You really are good security, and you're filling in well for the attorney that had the...
He knows being Greek, I like to talk too much, so.
He should be on the city council. When he got the votes, he just stopped talking, right?
Right, exactly. I think Councilman Palermo was right. They need to make sure they keep you on staff and increase your pay. No, you have provided a great service. I think you and Regina together, I have a lot of confidence that if you keep doing what you're doing, this will be successful. And that's what this council wants to do. And so I'm going to let...
We'd have one more light in the queue before that. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to echo what we just heard, I want to thank you for the turnaround, because I was in the same spot, right? We sat in that Law Committee meeting, and it wasn't good. But since that meeting, since the changes you've made, and now going above and beyond to change the hours of your establishment, that says a lot about you and the liquor license holder that you are. What I will say is, you could go to Lincoln, and you could change the time or whatever you want to do. We know this. This is just a recommendation. But I'm happy to hear you say it on the record here for 1:30. Could I have clarification on that, city clerk? I'm sorry, the question is, if 4:15 agrees to a 1:30 ushering people out or maybe closing the bar, I'm not even sure what that means, will that be what's presented to the Liquor Control Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then 1:30 it is. But again, thank you for agreeing to that. Much better place. I do want to clarify. I mentioned there was a tavern report in January, but it's exactly like Councilmember Melton said. It was a tavern report that I read and thought, it's a tavern report, but it doesn't go to this side. It's what you should have did as a liquor license holder. You did exactly that. And we do get them a lot. So just to clarify that, there was a tavern report, but not for the negative. So don't say anything.
No.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bagley, anticipating what you may do, the proposed amendment can be won in terms of the time and also amending to an I. You're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. You don't have to speak. Just listen. I, so in the process from October to now, gentlemen, I spoke to constituents down there, people that go to the O'Market. I spoke to the Neighborhood Association businesses, saying, how's 4:15 doing? The tavern reports, we already went through those from October. There was one since then. To pledge you guys to close at 1:30, also that, you know, you understand the Omaha Police Department's shortage of officers, right? Be good stewards. Go out of your way to be good. And I really am truly hoping and believing you guys... And I really am truly hoping and believing you guys will, because we had a long, I really appreciate being on that Law Committee, because I think you guys understand, we spoke candidly to you in that meeting in October, all three of us did, we weren't very happy. We want you guys to succeed, we want customers, I got family that go in there, I want to sneak in and check you guys out every once in a while, and I'll say hello to you, especially say hello to the big guy here. But I want it to be a safe place, and people that come there, I know you guys want that. So please, we don't want to see you in the Law Committee. I want to see it when I'm in the O-Market, I'm going to come in and have a cold beer and say hello to you, see how things are going, and I wish you the best, I really do. Nobody wants a business not to succeed. I hope, I said this in October to you guys, I want you to make a ton of money, the O-Market's growing, all that stuff going on downtown, we get this streetcar going, it's going to whip people around that urban core, you guys are pretty good at marketing, I imagine you'll figure out how to get people down 13th Street, down 10th Street, wherever. So going forward, let's make sure we don't see in the Law Committee. Be honest, if there's something going on, the tavern ports, we talked about those, be good stewards, respect the police, they're not your security, make sure you have your good security, not the ones that we had when all these issues were going on in '22 and '21. So make those commitments, and we'll look forward to not seeing you down at the Law Committee, because remember, Melton, she runs a pretty tight ship, as you guys saw when we were in there, and my colleague, Councilmember Palermo, he doesn't pull any punches either, and I'm learning from the two of them, so that probably isn't the best thing in the world when you're in trouble, but I think you guys have made good steps. It's going to get warm now, I get a little hesitant, it's like, it's going to get warm, there's going to be a lot of people, that means there's a lot of business. Overdo it with security, keep people safe, Omaha Police isn't your security force, so thanks. A motion to, for 1:30 close time and the reduction, the liquor license from a I to a, it would stay an I, it's not deny, it is an I, continue to be an I.
I'm going to speak to an I, yeah.
C to an I. Okay. From a C back to an I. Correct? Thank you. And close at 1:30, correct? That's my motion. Thank you.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to communicate that two hours ago, I was ready to vote no, and maybe even 10 minutes ago. I do respect the Law Committee, I just want you to know that we take these things really seriously, and that we need that commitment from you as the owners and the security that you're going to make it better. And I'll vote yes, but it was touch and go 10 minutes ago. And just, just so you know, we are serious, we, this isn't just a free pass, we do take it seriously.
Thank you. No further lights, there's a motion and a second to amend. Roll call.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. As amended.
As amended.
No, as amended.
Roll call.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dex.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Item 49, in ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to Garrett Salon Service for Hell Creek Green Infrastructure Maintenance Services.
Public hearing on number 49 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, in ordinance authorizing the issuance of purchase orders to Service Master and Serv Pro for on-call sanitary sewer backup services.
Public hearing on number 50 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 51, in ordinance to approve the extension of a price agreement with the Utility Service Group for pipeline assessment and cleaning of sanitary and combined sewers.
Public hearing on 51 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, in ordinance vacating Sergeant Street, line between 34th Street and 35th Street, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on 53 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, in ordinance levying a special tax and assessment for Sidewalks Group SWR 2022-01.
Public hearing on 54 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 55, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for Roanoke Business Park, located northwest of 120th Street and Roanoke Boulevard, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on 55 is today, proponents, please. I was trying to guess which one you guys were here for.
Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself, Patrick Mulhall, representing developers in the audience as well. We're requesting a amendment to the existing Roanoke mixed-use agreement. We are looking to add indoor and outdoor recreation use within the allowed uses to move this project forward. I'll let you know. If you have any questions, let me know, I'll answer.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Ms. Melton.
Yeah, and I just quickly want to say, first of all, thank you for staying around until 6:15 for this. This is extremely exciting, you know, it was last week or the week before, we're passing things that go along here. This is extremely important to getting for our development, redevelopment of tranquility, which I think we're very, very close to. I know the mayor has said it is one of her priorities for this year, but it's kind of like the chicken before the egg, which one do you need first? Do you have tranquility redeveloped, or do you have the development on the other side in order to get the turnback tax, which then pays for the development of tranquility? Well, the bottom line is, it doesn't matter which one goes first, they're both needed, and so I'm very confident that we're going to get that done. So we've got this agreement with Roanoke, Mulhalls, I mean, Mr. Hazy, thank you, I really appreciate this development, because this is what will lead to then, one of the mayor's priorities of getting tranquility done for the development. So again, I know sometimes we announce one thing before we announce the other, and we don't have a lot of control over that, but they go hand in hand, and this is what will allow us to help make those improvements to Tranquility Park. So, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 56, in ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal group 2023-04.
Public hearing on 56 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 57, in ordinance levying a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2023-05.
Public hearing on 57 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 58, in ordinance to approve a contract with Lexus Nexus for the investigator crash reporting system.
Public hearing on 58 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 59, in ordinance to approve a grant funding in the amount of $30,373 for the UNO School of Criminology and Criminal Justice.
Public hearing on number 59 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 60, in ordinance to approve grant funding to provide annual mental health sessions for OPD.
Public hearing on number 60 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 61, in ordinance to approve the Omaha Downtown Improvement District Association 2023-2024 Budget and Work Plan and to levy a special tax and assessment on real estate within the BID, A's Communication Opposition.
Public hearing on number 61 is today, proponents, please. I think we still have Holly Barrett by Zoom. We'll get you off mute there if you want to speak, Holly.
Yes, thank you. I'm Holly Barrett, Executive Director, Omaha Downtown Improvement District, 1620 Dodge Street. You've had a very long meeting tonight, so I want to extend it, other than to say that each of you individually and collectively have been a big part of all of the projects that have been happening in downtown, from major things like the streetcar, all the way down to the small projects like new trashcans and sidewalk improvements. So thank you so much for asking all of the thought-provoking questions that really affect those projects happening. I'm here to answer any questions specific to my own organization.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 62, in ordinance to accept a proposal by UNMC for DNA testing and forensic genetic genealogy analysis services.
Public hearing on number 62 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 63, in ordinance to accept a grant award from the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program.
Public hearing on number 63 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 64, in ordinance to establish Class A flammable liquid storage district, number A-163, located at 6717 South 156th Street.
Public hearing on 64 is today, proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, item 65 through 83, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero, meeting is adjourned at 6:20.